Welcome everyone, I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for October 17th, 2019. It's just about 7:05 and I'd like to start with the first item on our agenda. For a site plan approval for Zero Hudson Street, map 30, parcel 54, for land clearing and grading. I will read the public notice that went out pertaining to this hearing. Uh, I'm sorry, it's not a public hearing because it's a land clearing permit, but that we did send out a notice. The notice reads as follows. "In accordance with sections 7-03-050A1D and 7-09-010 of the North Borough Zone and Bylaws, the North Borough Planning Board will hold a public meeting on October 17th, 2019 at 7:00 PM at the North Borough Public Library at 34 Main Street, North Borough, Mass., to consider the site plan approval application of Shrewsbury Homes Incorporated for the proposed construction of three single-family homes resulting in the disturbance of 83,000 square feet of land area along Hudson Street, map 30, parcel 54, portion of. Plans prepared by Connorstone Engineering, Inc. are on file at the Town Clerk's Office and Town Planner's Office." Okay, and I see that you're here, so if you'd like to get started?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, for the record, I'm Mike Sullivan from Connorstone Engineering. Ron Askew is the owner of the property as well as the applicant. Uh, we were before the vote with a different proposal a few months ago, so you certainly understand where we're located. Uh, the site itself, uh, there's a lot of wetland with a perennial stream in the rear of the property, uh, substantial distance from that, so it shouldn't impact that at all. Uh, the site is 5.6 acres. Uh, the property, there's a high point here, uh, and then it slopes in all directions from that high point. We're in residential C zone, 20,000 square feet, 100 feet of frontage. Uh, and what Ron is proposing to do is actually four lots. Uh, Ron is just developing these three and that's what was submitted, uh, for approval from you guys tonight is these three lots. He's proposing three single-family homes, uh, four bedrooms. Uh, the lot size range from 20,000 square feet, which is this one, 22,000 square feet is lot three, and the real lot is 173,000. Uh, under the town zoning, if you have 170,000, about four acres, uh, you only need 50 feet of frontage. So this would be considered here, that lot, and this lot owns the whole back piece. Uh, the lots, uh, will be serviced by individual subject systems, which are shown in green. Uh, we have done definitive testing with the board health, uh, sands and gravels, uh, no gravel under 16 feet, uh, so very conducive for drainage and subject systems. Uh, as you had indicated, it's 83,000 square feet is the disturbance. Anything over 20,000, we move forward. Uh, as far as the requirements of the standards that happen to be met, section 7-09-010D, the review standards, uh, there's six of them, uh, minimize site operation and land clearing. Uh, both the land clearings, you can see the back yards are fairly minimal, uh, the rest of the clearing is associated with the houses, the driveway, uh, and the subjects as well. Uh, obviously, there's more clearing associated with this because you have a long driveway. Uh, this will all be protected in here, uh, so there will be a substantial amount of land that will be protected. And, and what is being taken, trees taken down is a direct result of the meek development of each lot. Uh, protect wildlife habitat is number two. Uh, we check natural heritage and endangered species. Uh, there's, there's no endangered species in the area, so that probably doesn't apply here. Uh, protect understory vegetation, as I said, uh, for the immediate development, uh, we will be taking trees down in the understory and the remaining land will be protected. Uh, employ proper site management techniques. Uh, we've done a lot of work with Ron over the years. Uh, we would state everything that's on this plan. Uh, Ron is a hands-on developer. Uh, he's on the property, uh, every day supervising everything that's going on. Uh, so, uh, what is approved will be what's staked and what's staked will be enforced by Ron. So I think that standard will be taken here. Uh, protect the site during construction, uh, prevent erosion, sediment control. Um, what you see in yellow, uh, is going to be silt flats for waddles. As you can see, we're encapsulating the entire work area. What you see in blue are temporary sediment basins, so the runoff will be directed to those, uh, so that you're not giving any sediment or silt up into the street. Uh, additionally, uh, there'll be riprap, uh, wherever there's an entrance onto the road. Initially, there'll just be one. Uh, Ron actually started this one right here just to get in. Uh, obviously, you can't break it off apart here, uh, so he has some riprap, uh, and extended in 50 feet or so, um, so that you can get off, off the road. That will be used for the land clearing component as the driveways are put in, uh, that riprap, riprap will be installed on each one of them so that there's no silt leaving the site towards the street or towards the butters. Uh, also, uh, this represents a two-to-one slope. Fred has a problem with that, so we'll have a, a brief discussion about that, uh, about the two-to-one slope, uh, and, and that's one of Fred's comments. Fred has sent a letter, uh, with several recommendations, but conditions, we have absolutely no problem with agreeing with everything that's outlined in his letter. Uh, but as I said, the only thing is that... Number... Six on the letter that Fred has sent. Um, what Ron was considering in terms of the development, uh, Fred's suggesting something more gravel under two-to-one, three-to-one, or something like that. Uh, what Ron was anticipating is doing, uh, bark mulch and plantings here, not a sediment lawn. Uh, by going to a three-to-one slope, we'll be taking more trees down here. Uh, so we would hope that we work with Fred on that and, you know, if it's not going to be grass, uh, then a two-to-one would be acceptable. Uh, that would be, Ron's preference is to, um, bark mulch and put packs in or, or something like that on the slope, just slow and save some of the trees. Uh, and as I said, this fire is, is fine. Uh, we have no problem with it and the conditions that, uh, Fred has recommended, we'll support all arguments. Anything more to add to that? Put that, put that into the floor, please.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Is there any really good questions? Um... Has an A in there, yeah?
We submit the A in our...
Yeah, but you'll have it assigned for later.
And the A in our, this represents the amount.
Okay.
Yep.
And I'm assuming most of the clearance is on a big lot. You probably have one for example, the three.
Yeah.
But the majority is on the bigger lot, obviously.
Correct. Yeah, anything over 20,000 in case of any, um, so...
Steph, anything from... Fred, did you want to talk about your letter?
Yeah, the, um, the plan is, uh, the, there are a few things that...
Oh, does Fred need a microphone?
Well, as he speaks, I can hear it.
Okay. Fred, you gotta give it a good call.
The land clearing, there's some land clearing shown on lot four, but lot four is not part of the application, so the amount that's disturbed on that one, that's, I'd estimate will be around 6,000, so an additional permit may be required if they exceed the 20,000 on that lot as well. And with these grasses, not going to develop that, but that work that is shown on there must be, being done in conjunction with clearing of the area. There's a comment in there about roadway permits and waterproofed trees, which will be due prior to the building permit. Uh, that's standard. In the past, we have, with the DPDW, we've worked with the building department to make sure that applicants know that those are being paid at the time of the building permit. Some developers get surprised by that when they go to apply for building permits, so we're trying to be a little bit proactive and want to add to it. The, the thing managing the site while you're doing the site work, my suggestion is that, my hope is that you would do one single access point to get the trucks in and out of these guys, do any removal of soil or bringing, moving afterwards, and then, once you pour the foundation, then establish the three driveways and then the tracking pads would be located in each of those driveways, so that rather than having four access points like from the beginning, which would possibly invite mud to be deposited out of the street, you could centralize it in another location at least during the majority of the site work. That would be more manageable for traffic as well as erosion control. The tracking pads, um, are required at each entrance on Hudson Street until the driveways are actually paved. Uh, erosion control barriers are recommended to be installed along the property lines in case one lot is stabilized and the neighboring lot is not. Uh, the plan doesn't show that because they're looking at the overall plan, but one house may get sold before the other is stabilized and the lot next door may not be, so it's more or less be that, although we have one on that lot, uh, and three on lots that aren't even stabilized. Good question. We already talked about the grading on lot three, um, the two-to-one slope, the plan didn't indicate that there was bark mulch there, and I assumed it would be grass, really I can only two-to-one, even three-to-one, but if it's going to be bark mulch, it seems that would probably be appropriate. The bylaw requires that the site be revegetated as quickly as possible and not be left unstirred or disturbed for a long period of time, which leads to the question of when do you plan to start?
Thinking the first one, this one, so that just makes the erosion that much more difficult, erosion that much more difficult now and moving into the spring, so you want to maintain. Fortunately, we got, how do you look at soils, true, so we can create a little sediment basin, I think, if we want to.
You only need to do the sedimentation basins as quickly as possible. And the sedimentation basins are shown as temporary, so my letter indicates that they should remain in place until everything that's contributing to the basins is stabilized, and then whatever is necessary to control the water from running from one lot to another in a situation where it's more than it was before the development, especially on the neighboring properties that are not part of the lots to be developed. Um, there are five items listed in the bylaw about monitoring and inspection, and those need to be adhered to very strongly and stated in court, which is around office. Um, the stream in the back, it's, it appears to be granite. Um, it doesn't indicate where the annual high watermark is, so I don't know whether the water flow through the front area would start and stop. And we're suggesting that you may need to file a determination of applicability with the Conservation Commission once that's determined.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk over here later.
Um, the, the plan does indicate some impervious cover limits for each of the lots. Um, typical with a plan like this, the house that's shown on there is a box, and it's a proposed how-to, four bedrooms, colonial, whatever. At the time of the building permit, that's what I'd like to work, that usually gets a little bit more undefined and the size of the house and the purpose cover may change, so there's an impervious cover relationship that's required with the application for a building permit, and then recharge is required if you exceed 15%, which looks like is already proposed on this side, there are some labels shown on there, so it seems it will have the cover, but I wanted to ensure that it's, this plan is not, to be expected for that calculation by the actual one for use of the proposed lots.
We're gonna, one thing I forgot to mention, if I could interrupt a second, Fred. We have groundwater divided, groundwater three is on this side, groundwater two is on this side, so we're gonna have to go with groundwater advisory, uh, will be...
What we do with residential though, is we have you, uh, provide those impervious cover calculations, and if you exceed the 15%, uh, you propose a drywall, then that area is reduced, eliminated from the impervious cover. Generally, that's enough to put you under the 15% and you can go ahead and get your building permit, park building inspection. It's only something that we do for residential because of so-called...
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't done a calculation, we haven't smitten it yet, but the basins that we're proposing, we're coming in 10 years' storm.
Therefore, there are drywells shown...
Right, but I haven't smitten it in calc view, you know. This drywall showed here, on this one, yeah, uh, on here, on this one, uh, the drywall is in where the temporary basins were. So, we have addressed that, we just haven't got Fred on the information.
I'm assuming that the house configuration may change as the time it goes through, or so it'll be something else, and then, uh, as with all of our reviews, we'd like to see it, uh, as the plan in the end, verify that everything was built as designed.
Any other staff comments? Does the board have any questions about Fred's letter? Thank you. Any questions down here? Anthony?
Just, I'm curious on the, the document that you draft, will it be updated to include the things that you just talked about that aren't on that sheet, like the, the drive, the one access point and the grading?
No, I don't envision any document, uh, this letter's not going to be amended, but what will be the final document is your decision if we close the area tonight and incorporate the conditions that I laid out as proposed, and then it will just be up to staff and the applicant to manage the site during construction and, uh, you know, make sure that they're maintaining one access as long as possible until the other three are necessary.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question about, you mentioned that the sedimentation, is that what you called it, needed to be done as quickly as possible?
Um, the revegetation is to be done as quickly as possible, the, was a, the temporary sedimentation basin need to stay in place until all the area contributing to that is stabilized with grass or...
Okay, so that was not time-sensitive? No, okay. And for the impervious cover calculations, that's covered in here, if that comes back in a way that you didn't anticipate?
Um, what happens is, at the time they apply for building permit, we actually have a form and, and ask them to lay, lay out the size of the lot, the amount of impervious cover that they're going to actually build, the dimensions of the house, the driveway, any walkways or sheds or anything that's proposed, and they determine the amount of impervious cover on the lot. A couple of the lots are just around 20,000 per feet, so that limit is going, most likely going to be exceeded, it looks like it already does. What we do as staff is we have, uh, developed a relationship between building and engineering department that when an applicant exceeds that 15%, if he proposes a drywall, which takes that roof off and recharges it back into the ground, which is the purpose of the lot, then the area that contributes to that drywall, roof, guys in the bounce box, is then subtracted from the impervious cover, generally allowing it to get under 15%. If they still exceed that 15%, they would need to, on whether to recharge the driveway or whether the ZDA has to put bearings from the lot.
Which is extremely rare. I actually don't know if they're happening or...
We, we almost all...
Okay. Thank you, that's helpful. Um, so this is not a public hearing, however, I will accept comments if there are any butters here who came to comment on this application? No?
I guess not.
Sure?
I'm the homeowner on 389 Hudson Street. Hello?
Karen, you just need to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, uh, my name is Michael Zilag. I'm the homeowner of 389 Hudson Street, which is to the left of the, that really large lot. So one of the questions I had was regarding the clearing in the front of those properties. Uh, there's a pretty substantial mound in front of the property, which has a lot of vegetation, um, so, which is very prone to erosion, and with the, I wanted to understand better, like, what kind of clearing will be done there, and will there be any erosion issues, and then, like, how will the driveways actually look? Because, that's one question. The second question I had was, um, regarding, um, there's a pretty substantial traffic on the street with very, very poor visibility on that side. With the driveways located and recessed into that mound, my big concern is actual, uh, safety of the people going by, and how that's going to impact traffic going through. Um, my lot has cleared that space around, and I, I have some major issues getting out of that, my driveway, because of that traffic. Those driveways have the potential to be even more dangerous than mine, so that's one of the things that I like to understand, like, what's going to be done to mitigate that?
So Fred, do you have any thoughts in terms of erosion? I know you talked a lot about it in your letter, or...
Um, I do. Um, the plan does call for erosion control measures and slow stabilization. Um, what's proposed seems to be adequate, if there's some erosion that's happening already, I'm not aware of that, so perhaps Mike and Ron can speak to it. Yeah, I'm not aware of any erosion problems now, and it's pretty heavily treated at this point, so I think it's pretty much stabilized. Uh, to answer your first question, um, the amount of clearing coming in, to, you're absolutely right, there is a, a grade change here, but it's probably going to be in the vicinity of 30 feet wide in order to meet the, the grades. Um, the worst cut that we're talking is, it's probably four or five foot cut, we're trying to maintain a maximum of 10% grades, and the driveway will slide down into the road. Um, but there certainly will be, uh, a cut there, so you can get the driver in at a reasonable grade, as kind of indicated with proposing erosion, and the riprap of the proposed driveway, um, should take care of any sediment that, uh, the trucks pick up, so it's not going out in the street. Um, in terms of site distance, um, once some of these trees are cleared, and I don't know whether it's, you live here, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Um, once the trees are cleared, the site distance will, will improve for these driveways. Uh, I'm not familiar enough where your driveway is to understand whether what Ron is doing here helps you. Uh, it certainly wouldn't hurt you because vegetation's coming back.
Okay.
So if anything, it'll improve your situation.
I took some photos, I don't know if that would be helpful for folks to actually see what the site looks like. I mean, I'm sure you guys have been on site, but...
Yeah, sure.
Do you want to see that? I apologize for not making multiple copies, but my printer was struggling this afternoon, so... So basically, this is the view of the first, um, the, that mound in the front, so you will see that, that, this is the view from my driveway, as you see, the cars coming down, the visibility's not very good. Uh, my concern is that because the driveway's potential will be cut into the hill, um, people pulling out, I'm gonna have a really hard time seeing anything, and people obviously going down that street, uh, which, a lot of people tend to speed on the street, by the way. This, I'm just concerned that that's gonna be a...
No, I appreciate your comment. Obviously, Ron's trying to sell these houses. Uh, he's not gonna put anything in, he's gonna jeopardize someone's safety leaving the site. So, I'm sure whatever has to be done in order to have adequate site distance for the individual five of these houses, Ron certainly did.
Okay, and...
So is there anything, um, specific in the plan that would sort of alleviate that? Or is it just something we could plan on in advance that would make sure that that's in place so that we don't have any sort of site distance issues, or...
Uh, Chair?
Yeah?
I might have a suggestion, perhaps, um, in my letter, I indicated that roadway opening permits are required. Uh, you always on the plan that that grading and that cut starts right at the edge of the pavement, but the right, there is some distance between the edge of the pavement and the right way, and perhaps, um, a more detailed plan could be submitted indicating how much needs to be cut in order to have an adequate site distance, and perhaps if the applicant is willing to, perhaps, some, that, some work to be done in the right way as part of roadway opening permit to kind of clear that back to improve the site distance for all three of those lots as well as the neighbor. If you're doing site work, you maybe need to just push that whole thing back a little bit and have a flatter driveway at the entrance to Hudson Street. Um, certainly, we could work that out in some more detail, which you require at the roadway opening permit level, um, if you're amenable to that.
I have to decide that on the site. I go a long way to try to keep whatever I can, aesthetics are a big part of what we do. I understand the safety concerns, so we just take the common sense approach to...
I believe that something that needs to be reviewed at the time the roadway opening permit is requested and reviewed, and like I said, if necessary, some of the addition, some of the work could be done within the right way to flatten that out a little bit more for all of these houses that are always in the area.
As we're going through this, we could certainly call Fred, uh, meet Fred on site and come to an agreement as to, uh, as I said, I think the, the biggest factor in terms of making sure it's safe is Ron trying to sell a house, so it's inherent with the whole process, I think that would be taken care of, but certainly Fred's involvement would be welcome as far as, uh, making sure that it is safe.
Um, does the board want to comment on that? No, email stuff over you. So yes, is that something we have to add as a condition to your letter?
It's not really defined at this point, so it's hard to quantify in a decision.
Right.
But there are, there are good original roadway permits that need to be granted by the DPDW, who happens to be, uh, that's one of the tasks that I've been on now, so I will be watching for your permits, and I will be looking to meet with you to determine if there's adequate site distance, uh, for not only the neighbor, but also for each of these lots.
So could we add, um, something to the effect of adequate cut or site distance reviewed at time of road opening permit? Would that be something we could add?
Something that we're gonna do anyway, but... That's a matter of course.
Okay, so that, that'll be all, we don't have to necessarily add that as a condition?
That is fine.
Do you have any further comments?
Okay, no, that was it.
Anthony, do you have any?
I don't.
Down here, anything? No? Okay. Any other comments? Yes?
Hi, so, I'm actually an owner, uh, at Corey Way of one of the units that actually is one of the closer ones to the line.
Can we give your name and your address, please?
Sure. Uh, my name is Mark Veglia, the address is 37 Corey Way. Um, and actually, I have a picture here of where the building is relative to one of the plot lines, if I could just bring this up to you guys. I took that up there.
Thanks.
So, basically, my concern there is that that Hammerhead Lot runs right along the plot line, which cuts into the woods that are right just basically adjacent to our building, and one of the concerns that I have, and that I know that many of the other people here who are owners of, uh, our condos and our complex, is that that's going to be visible through the trees and is going to affect our property values. And one of the other issues is that we have some drainage issues in the back on our lot as well. Maybe not issues, but just the way it drains, it's basically right along that property line where this construction could potentially cause flooding on that, in that section, and I'm, I'm curious how that would be addressed, or if that's something that...
I'm not clear where your building is, if you're worried about...
There's only the one picture that is being passed around right now, so...
So where is your relation to this?
Yeah, if you can show me that ruler, I'll show you the plot lines.
It's the closest building to your site.
Now, you know this is a single-family house that we're proposing, and you think...
And our building's right about, like, here somewhere, right there, right next to it.
Yeah.
So if you see this picture here...
And you're worried about what this is gonna look like?
Well, we've got woods here, and this corner of the lot right there, you can see, actually cuts right there, so we presumably be able to see right through these trees here and see that house there.
I wouldn't argue that.
Which?
You don't want to see a house?
Well, we don't now see a house, so the addition of a house there could potentially reduce the value of the properties, which is the question.
Well, that would pretty much put a squash on any building the whole time.
Do you have concerns about...
Um, not necessarily. Part of the charm of those buildings is...
I just see you did direct your comments to the board, not directly in the direction that...
Yeah, no, I know, he called me over there to point to the thing, so...
That's okay. Um, so, do you have concerns about flooding into your property, or is it mostly just a visual...
There are, there are two separate concerns. One of them is the effect that it could potentially have on the values of our units, being a butters, being so close, having the trees that are right alongside our units, uh, basically trimmed back to the point where we can see through, you know, those trees into the land, see the new property, and then whatever activity's going on and they're being able to hear it. And the other one is potential drainage issues, which I think that the property management company, not representative Scott, would actually be able to speak to a little better than I could. Um, but yeah, uh, the effect on the property values, the effect on the view from the back there, part of the charm of our units and the value of those units is based on how secluded it is back there, which... is back there, which my concern and my question is just the effect that it's going to have and how visible it's going to be from our standpoint.
So he does have the right to build there. However, I would be curious to know about any, did you notice any drainage issues in the back lot or flooding potential?
Well, I think, as this is all pointed out, the roads are very sandy and quite coarse, so I would expect that it would not be much of an increase in runoff. And I did, in my letter, indicate that they need to verify that there's no additional runoff after development that was prior to the neighbor's property, which is the law. However, the bylaw is not required nor does it on any other residential development by drainage calculation for single-family homes. So there are no calculations. It's all basic forms per use cover. We cover that with the dry wells and the groundwater protection bylaw. So runoff from a single-family house is generally considered fairly...
Okay. And you have no concerns flooding-wise or drainage-wise?
Absolutely none.
No, okay. Does the board have any questions about drainage or flooding?
No, I'm sure if flooding happens during construction, then you would go on...
That's different.
Yep.
And what happens if flooding happens during construction? What is...
They're responsible to keep the water erosion on their property during construction. And as the site is stabilized, they need to make sure that the amount of water that leaves the site is no greater than it was prior to that.
Okay. Any questions or comments? No. Okay. Any other comments?
I have a couple more questions. So one, I have a well that is very close to my property line.
Thank you. I have a potable water well. I think most houses on the street have groundwater, but I think me and another neighbor down the street has a potable water well. I'm curious, I mean, it's a pretty substantial site disturbance, will that have any effect on the adjacent wells on the, next to, on some of the properties?
Did groundwater with the flood, is that anything that would be covered?
It's not part of the groundwater.
Oh, it's not, okay.
The groundwater bylaw is designed to protect it. Groundwells count by.
This is your own private?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Do you know of any disturbances or anything?
Well, the Artesian wells, I don't know how many hundreds of feet it is, but...
287 feet.
Yeah, so the way the Artesian wells is constructed is they're down through the ledge and then a couple hundred feet below that is where they're grabbing the water from. That water can be coming from miles away from where the actual well is. The surface disturbance that we're going to create here will in no way impact an Artesian well. It probably wouldn't impact a dug well, but certainly it would have no bearing on an Artesian well.
Okay. Does the board have any questions about that? Any questions?
No.
One more question. You mentioned lot one, which is the first lot that you're going to be developing?
Two or three.
Two, okay, so the, not the largest, it's the two smaller ones?
Two or three.
Okay. Okay. And you said, you said beginning of winter roughly, like...
I'm just thinking of starting in November.
Okay.
I was going to show us up sooner than...
Do you want to have a question? Mike, you're not doing any blasting at the site, right?
No, we've done substantial subsurface testing. All sands and gravels, no ledge, no lot of problems. So there'll be no blasting.
Okay. That might be more concerning than well.
Okay. One more, if I may. How substantial the clearing between, between the largest lot that's, that will be adjacent to me, will there be like a, trees, will the trees be left there or will that be completely cleared? Like what do you anticipate there?
Certainly, there are houses and part of the area that was screened is out of the clear. I think it's a long. So we're going to take out enough of the trees in order to get the driveway secured.
Okay. But you anticipate there'll be some of that left over potentially between the driveway?
I'm going to make as much of the tree line as I can. It's easy to build with a clear cut. We have to do some extensive trimming because of the grade change, but we'll continue.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other questions from the board? Any other comments from staff? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the site plan for Zero Hudson Street, map 30, parcel 54 for land clearing and grading with the conditions outlined from the town engineer in the letter? I don't, I assume I don't have to go through all of these, but the conditions outlined in the letter from Fred?
I'll make a motion to approve the permit for Zero Hudson Street, map 30, parcel 54 for the land clearing and grading with the letters from Fred, Litchfield, and anything else, right? And then have the letters attached.
It would be the conditions to step forth in the one reading letter.
Okay. The conditions to step forth.
Step forth in the one reading letter.
Okay. And that was a motion for the site plan approval?
Yes.
Okay, I thought, okay, great. Would anyone like to second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay.
I mean, just a few, but so I'll put together, you know, the draft and then I'll send out.
Okay, thank you.
Are you doing... [inaudible] 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 Sorry, just had to shift paperwork. Okay. It is just about 7:40 and we are starting the public hearing for 41 Lyman Street, special permit site plan approval and special permit for groundwater protection overlay district. I will read the public notice, the public hearing notice that was distributed. In accordance with section 7-03-05082 and 7-07-010 of the Northborough zoning bylaws, the Northborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on October 17th, 2019 at 7:15 at the Northborough Public Library at 34 Main Street, Northborough, Mass, to consider the special permit site plan approval application and special permit for groundwater protection overlay district with Crandall Hicks, K.R. Bowler Engineering for the proposed 20,000 square foot expansion of an existing warehouse located at 41 Lyman Street, map 66, parcel 14. Plans prepared by Bowler Engineering are in file at the town clerk's office and town planner's office. Phil.
For the record, my name is Brandon Barrett, here on Bowler, here at the Act. All we've done about Jerry and Pat is, is the Act. As discussed, we're here for a second, I need a special permit for work within the groundwater overlay district. Our project also required a nano-widewake conservation permit through review that last week were approved. We also know the groundwater committee last week got a positive round of approvals in this area. The subject parcel is 41 Lyman Street, shown here on this area. It's located on the eastern side of Lyman Street, about quarter mile south of the intersection of Parker Street. We're surrounded by a few industrial uses to our northeast and south, and then Barrow Lake and a town park over to the west. It's also used for towns drinking water. The site currently features a 64,000 square foot warehouse building. It's used for the storage and distribution of lawn mowers and stove bros. Those are just stored on-site and then distributed to local businesses and also places up on the East Coast. Has two access drives onto Lyman Street, a paved parking area, on-site stormwater management system, on-site waste water system, and other associated utilities for the building. What we're looking to do is expand the building by 20,000 square feet by just constructing a hundred-foot additional rear of the building. It'll be 200 feet wide to match the existing footprint of the building. Also, constructing associated parking and access areas and stormwater management group is well associated with this. We do have a weathered system to the back, but we are respecting all of the weathered buffers. Our new stormwater management system, where we configure an existing service infiltration basin that's being used, but also supplement that with three underground infiltration systems to help us meet mass, the, the stormwater standards for repeat rage runoff, groundwater recharge, and water quality volumes. On top of that, we've received some higher comments from the fire department and engineering. It's part of our groundwater advisory committee. Those comments are amenable to us and we provide responses to the same. I mentioned we've met through the other, other review boards and got approvals there. Pretty simple project, we're just expanding an existing use to provide some extra storage. Welcome any questions or comments you may have, if you have any more to say, I'd like to...
Okay. Any questions from the board? Email start with you.
I'm just reading this from a legal board, because we did talk about the groundwater and...
Did everyone have a chance to read the recommendations from groundwater? Do you have any more to read?
There's one thing we added up here, Fred, where it was going to be professionally cleaned out once a year. Didn't you say the system was complicated, so they were hard to view?
I think we said that they would stick with the operation maintenance plan. That goes over, our operation maintenance included in the drainage report and that goes over the professional inspection of the stormwater management systems. Whether that's with us or another company, we haven't decided on, but we are discussing what their responsibilities are. So I believe the operation maintenance plan is mentioned in the recommendation and they're aware of that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that was added, because I remember we talked about it being professionally checked because it was a specific system and that's written in the operations made.
Okay. Oh, Michelle.
I'm just curious what you guys do, because I know you have a thousand lawn mowers, is that right?
Just about.
6,700 snow blowers? Just curious, what does the company do?
So they are the distributor for the East Coast for Aaron's and Ray's Lawn Mowers.
Oh, okay.
This warehouse, they will get dropped here and then distributed. There's a few local businesses that get them, but they're also delivering lawn mowers and snow blowers all the way to New Jersey, Indian Hampshire. So this is one of the major distribution centers for Aaron and Ray.
It's great lawn mower.
They are.
They have one.
Do the machines, all of them come already filled with oil or is that something that's prepped outside?
The machines will come with their first oil in them. So it's, the engine will have, the radio engine will have some oil in it. That's then wrapped in a plastic bag and then in a cardboard box and be assembled. So there's minor amounts of oil in the machines and the boxes, but not, no large storage of them, of large storage of oil on-site.
Any more questions down here?
I just have a quick question on the narrative that describing Lyman Street is a local roadway under the documentation of very dippy-ducky, is that...
I don't know.
Okay.
So for me, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate that you included these impact statements. These are really helpful to read through and exactly the kind of things that would want to be known. So I appreciate that you went to the extra effort to put that in here. I think that was really, that was really helpful. Thank you.
Steph, do you have any additional? Fred, do you want to talk through your letter? You're quite popular tonight.
The act that you did by looking at the review with the reports for the bylaw, in item number one, you cite the section of the bylaws 707011D4A1 through 5, which requires several items to be listed. It's important to note that the number of gallons of engine oil that will be stored within the snow blowers and lawn mowers in the building needs to be cited in the decision. That will be a big factor, which you use to determine if it's warm or if it's dehydrated. The project narrative indicates that the existing building provides six inches of exposed concrete foundation above the foundation floor, or in short, ensuring spills in the building that contain, this will be maintained within the expanded portion of the building. The applicant has indicated that exposed concrete area can contain 314,160 gallons of paint material, which is more than enough to contain the maximum amount of oil that was to be stored on-site along the sprinkler wall that may be emitted during the fire, during the time it takes the fire to fire it again. They estimated, I think it's 13,000 gallons and containers of 314,000 gallons. The prior development had prior use of the property back in the original special permit. It was a moving storage company, so there was a lot more material that could be considered toxic or hazardous and required much higher amounts of containment. So because there is that much of the bill, it's of all sense to just maintain that containment area. All equipment used within the building shall be powered by electricity or propane. The proposed containment tank in the northeast corner of the parking lot, originally it was a normal plan, indicating that it could be sized at some future point. Discussions with Brandon, we determined that the maximum amount of material that could be spilled in that area would be a tank production on a truck. Maximum 300 gallons. In order to be safe, they have indicated they would store no less than 500 gallons. The tank would have capacity of no less than 500 gallons, which seems more than that. There are a series of tank tanks and valves, because this is the groundwater line area, that were required in the original permit. And there's a tank on the other side and then this one that is proposed will have the same kind of valve set up so that if there is spill from the parking lot, some of these will be trained with the building in order around there and turn that valve. One thing that I noticed from my notes that I elected to put in my letter should be added to the decision as a third approval, is that the valves would be visibly marked in the field. And we had agreed to that, meeting, or campaign or committee. However, I look like to put that in the memo to you today. The operation maintenance plan should also include a copy of the manufacturer's maintenance for the water quality unit and annual notification with the town engineer. And the town engineer shall be afforded the opportunity to inspect the work while we're doing their inspection. The groundwater advisory committee and the town engineer shall be providing copies of the contract and invoices for all work performed. And these are all standard comments that generally sent to the committee that they then transfers on to the special permit grant authority. And I believe they're all agreeable to the applicant and they are in the operation maintenance plan. The drainage report does actively address the stormwater management. However, they have assumed the infiltration rate for the permeability of the soil in the infiltration areas and I would like that infiltration rate to be confirmed by a permeability test, one, in each of the areas where infiltration will be performed. And then the applicant will be required to obtain a permit from the Earthwork Board prior to any site work, and they have already submitted that application, but the board does not meet until next week. Then all changes in the plan should be outlined in the NABO plan. And the ASBO plan will also include drainage certification after the construction is complete, verifying that the system was designed for the building in accordance with the design and will perform as... It requires a same biologic analysis that was done during the proposal to confirm that what was actually built will work as...
And you have no objections to those conditions?
Including the one of marking the valves, we did discuss that in, in the sentencing vote. We discussed that announcement with the financial.
Okay. And conditions from previous special permit, you're aware of?
Yep, we reviewed those, you know, over a few, then we're modified or moved to make some improvements to the table, but we weren't after those as well.
Okay. And the condition of paying a water privilege fee in the amount of 2,800 prior to...
I spoke to Fred about that today, and he's finally aware, so we understand that's required, but it'd be subject to the requirements that...
Anytime there's an additional building that's connected to town water, there's a part to pay additional water. It's called a water permanent water privilege fee. It's actually similar to a battery, but other jobs call it that. Permanent water privilege fee according to the acts that were considered by...
Does anybody have any questions about the groundwater application? I'm sorry, the letter. Down here anything?
I just have one. The exposed concrete containment... The exposed concrete containers, where is this?
So the buildings, the steel frame buildings, which a lot of times you'll just see will be a slab with that steel frame structure on top of it. With the original approval data, instead of doing a flat slab around the outside edge, they do a six foot exposed concrete wall. So then the floor is recessed about six inches from the top of the concrete. So if there is a spill, it's not going to come spilling out of the slab, there's a small containment wall around it.
Is there any concern about, I mean, I don't know how the building is, but concrete cracks and things like that? Is this something that would need to be expected to ensure that it would actually contain anything should there be oil or some other material that?
Well, I have been up there a number of years. I was up there when they first built it. I will allow to look at it after the addition is complete as the building is inspected and we do inspection and we'll go out together. It's generally not a concern. We have in some cases, I don't recall if this man or not, an epoxy coating put on top of the concrete. However, concerned about materials that could eat through the concrete, oil, it's not very viscous and slow moving and easily be contained. The amount of threat with the use that's going on there now with the twenty ounces of material in the machine and the plastic bag inside the box and pretty minimal, but there's always a chance that there could be practical operation.
Do you have other?
Nothing, no, thank you.
Do you have questions?
To, on your addition, do you think that you could actually, is that going to be in the rooftop that you could allow for solar to go on or?
That would be something that the architectural engineers that put those plans together would have to come out. I imagine it would be stable enough with the other roof that we'd be able to support that. But we have not had any discussion about them implementing solar and I feel more of the site and grounds and roofs and structural.
Kathy, because this is an addition, does that not come before designing?
Correct.
If it, but if it was a new project, it would, but not?
Right, if it was a brand new building, you know, vacant land, wouldn't the building have come before that?
And then on your traffic, it said maybe at the maximum might be four large trucks and then amongst that smaller trucks as they come to pick up their, you know, snow blowers and lawn mowers and the dispersed throughout the communities around it. So I don't know if the board wants to consider it or talk to it. It seems small, but as we're trying to alleviate some of the trucking that are going through the center of town, is it considered to ask like we would do with an ADV power where you're on Lyman Street so they can go Lyman and then go up towards one ninety-five versus coming out through Center of North Road to go up to two ninety? I mean, the traffic flow is not that much, but, and I don't know whether we had the right to ask that tonight with the applicant, but you know, just trying to alleviate some additional trucking that's going through the center.
I would think, I know some of the local businesses that use them are on Route nine, so the most optimal route for them is Lyman directly to Route nine.
Right, that makes sense.
Larger trucks that are going to be serving up down the east coast are going to want to get right on four ninety-five. But I think just given the nature of the business and where their deliveries are going, there's no advantage to them going self away from the site. They really want to go north, get on Route nine, get to the major highways as quick as they can.
Yeah, more concerned about the two ninety traffic that gets off of Church Street, comes down Church Street, cuts over Lyman Street that way, but.
I think we, you know, we can, they work closely with the truck drivers there. There's a ton of large amount coming on, so they can encourage them to take the appropriate routes and stick to the major highways and you know, coming, approaching the south-south from Route nine versus going down Cherry Street or on two ninety. So they would be willing to talk with their truck drivers and encourage that.
Yeah, so for me, it would be like, you know, it's very hard to proceed, you know, to say where are you going, you know, why are you taking these routes, which is really a hard thing to do. But I would like to see something where, you know, the board encourages to use the major highways versus more of the secondary routes.
And I agree, it is a difficult place, but we can, our client will definitely, if they can, to encourage the truckers to use the correct routes and make sure they're engaged.
Yeah, there's some language like that, you know, just a good business partner.
As long as it's nothing structural, what they need to do is more of a non-education program for their drivers, they will be amenable to that. That's something they would be, they want to be great.
I don't know how the board feels about that, but I think just making a note of it.
Any comments from the board on the traffic?
As long as it's just an education thing.
Kelly?
I have a question about the type of trucks that you guys are going to be. It says thirty registered trucks like you on site overnight. What types of trucks?
That is, so that's an addition from the original approval line was a moving company and they had a lot of trucks coming. Somebody would go and move out, I was putting their truck and store it on site before they moved to another business. So that should be carried over one from the previous business. Really, they don't have truckers staying on site overnight. Now they come, they pick up the products and they leave. It was just something that was, as we discussed in the groundwater advisory committee, we didn't want to restrict their rights in the future should, should anything change, but at this time there are no trucks being stored on site.
Okay, we also have, any other staff comments? Kathy, did you want to speak to the fire department's letter?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that quickly, Carrie. It was a review letter from the fire chief dated in September, the end of September. And the applicant has reviewed that, provided comments based on the fire chief's questions. And the fire chief has then reviewed Bowler's comments and he's fine.
I think he reviewed this, he's given the comments if you'd like. The first few comments were relative to the plan of use of the fire department will be, again, those are going to be repaired when the architect gets on board and approvals are done. It's relative to the fire suppression system pumps that are required and then others related to the fire suppression. Those planes will be fully repaired and vetted by the fire department from the requirements submitted for. So it's something that's just happening after this process. And then the third comment, no, returning radius, we can find the dash load requirements. Returning radius, which I believe should be attached to the letter, was going to comply with national requirements using the town of North Rose Fire Truck. And we reviewed that as a pre-application meeting in the fire department, unless they were able to that, so.
Okay, any questions about the letter from the fire chief in response?
No.
Anything else from staff? Okay.
Oh, mine was more about the site plan. It's like you took down a lot of vegetation in front. And I just couldn't find another plan. What is the landscaping that you expect?
There are some lower shrubs and some better trees. The trees that were out there were dying and were repaired, so they just had those removed to improve site quality, just to the building and people leaving the site. So some lower trees that won't impact site distances, but some nice, I mean, it's not a landscape architecture, we can't speak exactly what will be there. But some lower shrubs to short site distances and some burning flowers and, you know, grass is just to spruce up that area. Our client bought the building about two years ago, so a lot of stuff wasn't, so they're now just trying to, to freshen.
I wonder if we should add it just as a site plan condition that, hey, just a couple lower shrubs and, just so it gets not as part of the site plan that we add some trees. And I know you're going to, but sometimes people, if you don't have it in writing as part of the site plan, it doesn't happen.
Would you be amenable to a condition that that front landscape area be re-landscaped? Again, restrictions on exact requirements for what it is, we like to give them some freedom, so they kind of do what they want. They do mostly landscape business and challenge, we're willing to let the people there have some freedom on that. So if it's just a re-landscape, if we're amenable, we prefer a non-stripping type, other than we may just ensure that it's not getting back to that.
And that was to re-landscape the front of the property?
The front island, so, here. See, the area that captured the trees when they were looking a little bit greener than they are, but they were not great prepared than the last month on site and the places of.
Does the board have any comment on that type of condition?
That's a good idea, yeah.
So I'm sorry, I didn't hear what?
The board is asking the applicant to re-landscape the front of the building.
In accordance with the bylaw?
Yeah.
Yes. I have a question about a waiver request. So is that something we should consider before we review the rest of the plan? Is this, it's not a requirement of the site plan or special permit, it's just a request separately from the plan? Is that how this?
Well, what, sure, I mean, it should be, I mean, if you want to address that area and then just, you know, as part of the decision, you would list, in the decision, I would list waivers and then conditions.
So do you want to speak to the waiver request?
So essentially, the waiver request was relative to parking spaces. There's not many defined parking spaces on site, just they've been, the paint is stripped away. At this point in time, there's maybe four cars total on site with the trucks and everything. They primarily park in the spaces that you see up front here. So we just requested a waiver from requirement to strike out a number of parking spaces that just would not be used. It's just an additional work that would not provide any groundings to the site.
Does the board have any questions about this waiver? No, somewhere, I think there's a mention of up to thirty trucks, would they, they would just be parked in the parking lot?
Again, that was a carryover from what was a moving business. We just kept that condition in based off discussion with staff because we didn't want to start restricting. Our client bought the property with approval to potentially do that if they wanted to. There's no plans to at this point in time, but we just didn't want to remove the condition that they purchased the property with. The groundwater advisory committee is amenable to that, as that was their original condition.
So we also have, in the, in your responses, these are to be added as conditions? Is that correct? From the fire, the responses to the fire department, or if these are conditions? So does everybody look at the conditions on the responses and have any questions or?
That was just relative to their comments about the finding suppression plans instead of requiring them now, requiring them prior to the permission.
What you might want to suggest is, on the waiver for the parking, is to say, you know, you're doing it now, I understand why you're doing it now because you're not, you only have four spaces, why do fifty-eight, right? You know, but should the need happen and then somehow the town is monitoring it, that you will then, you know, repaint the parking lot? Because all of a sudden, if your use changes or you increase to where you're now a moving company or you're having twenty employees, you want to just at least show designated and handicap parking spaces?
We would think, if there was ever a need to put them out there or in speaking with Fred, if the use were to change, there is an administrative process that would have to happen at a minimum and then that would be determined. So we'd be amenable if there was ever a future need or required change in use that that would be addressed.
Does that need to be included in this or is that just standard?
Well, this, I usually have some standard language that I can just put in about, you know, the reserve area wouldn't be built on, you know, it's very general, but, but it's, but it basically puts the applicant, I notice that, you know, he might have gotten it waived, but that doesn't mean you can put a building addition there in the future, so.
Okay, so this is a, any other comments or questions from the board or staff? Okay, so this is a public hearing, if there are any abutters here to comment on this project? No? Okay. Okay, this is a monster of emotion, so let's see. We have, I want to just recap all of our conditions. We have conditions from Fred, from his letter. We've added the condition to re-landscape the front of the pop, the front of the property respective to the bylaws. We've added, we're adding a condition to, to educate drivers on truck routes? Is that how we phrase that?
You know, I, again, I've got some standard language that.
Oh, okay, yep.
That I can put in there about, you know, the preference being, you know, to use the major routes.
Okay.
Except for the local deliveries are necessary.
We have added the valves visibly marked in the field as a condition to Fred's letter. We have the conditions in response to the fire chief's letter that are listed in the document from lower engineering.
His letter, his, the, the fire chief's comments usually aren't incorporated into your site plan approval unless they were something specific to the site plan. And I think in this particular case, they're specific to the building, to the actual design of the building that will be reviewed by the building department and the fire department.
Which is relative to the language in my letter, that's pretty standard when we're, you know, addressing something that we believe should happen after the permit, so.
Okay.
Staff is fine with it not being, the issue here also fine with it not being.
Yeah, as part of the decision, Carrie and the other board members, you know, there would be a reference that you did receive a review letter from the fire chief, that's part of the permanent record. But as far as his actual recommendations, they're, they're specific to the actual building construction and not to the site plan.
Okay, so he doesn't need fire sprinkler plans submitted to the fire department?
He, he will, but, but that's required through the building code and fire codes.
Got it.
And our clients will be aware of that requirement and will be submitting those whether it's a condition or not.
Okay, I see. As part of the building permit application. Great, okay. So that, did, did I miss any conditions that the board heard or think that we had listed?
And the waiver.
And the waiver. So the waiver.
Regarding the reduced, providing reduced parking and also non-striping the existing or existing and future proposed pavement.
And you have, you have standard language for that? So we are including the waiver as part of a condition?
Well, it should be a part of your motion, but it's, it's not a condition. I mean, you, again, you can, you can vote it all at once, but you've got, you know, granting a waiver and then granting the, I mean, what conditions you want to put on the site plan.
Okay.
Fred had mentioned that we need to cite the amount of oil on site. Do we, is that part of this or?
Yeah, that's, it's listed in my letter, so it has a number. So there's a number for the volume of oil, twelve hundred eighty-one ounces like that. And then the, I don't know, but yeah, so the containment volume of three hundred fourteen gallons.
Do we need to go through anything specifically regarding the special permit for the decision? The purpose of the decision or?
You, I mean, you, you can if you want, but what I typically would do is write up the approval as that you're granting the special permit site plan approval and special permit for the groundwater bylaw, and then all the conditions are together. You know, the, the conditions aren't separated out for the site plan versus the special permit. It will just, you know, be one through, you know, whatever ends up being.
Okay, so you don't need us to walk through the criteria of a special permit for the decision for groundwater?
I think, no.
Okay, that makes sense. I just want to make sure you have what you need. Okay, who would like to make a motion to?
I was wondering, the site plan approval, should we walk down the criteria as I would? Will we go through the decision criteria on seven sixteen? Like to include it in the decision, but I don't think that I'm all the criteria.
Sure, we can do that. Okay, so for the decision criteria here for a site plan, so the first criteria is the site plan meets all applicable requirements of this bylaw? Does the board agree?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yeah.
Given the location type and extent of the land use proposed by the proponent, the design of the building form, building location, egress points, grading, and other elements of the site plan could not be reasonably altered to reduce clearing and grading, reduce the risk of groundwater contamination, improve pedestrian bicycle or vehicular safety, improve access to each structure for fire and other emergency services, reduce visual intrusion, achieve greater consistency and compatibility with surrounding area, reduce glare from headlights, avoid the removal of disruption of historical, traditional, or significant structures, reduce obstruction of scenic views. That is actually abbreviated. I'll just reference this area in the bylaws for the full content that everybody is reading and can see. Does everybody agree that that condition is met?
Yes.
Yes.
And then any variants is required from the zoning board of appeals have been granted. And I don't think that's applicable to appeals, there's no variants.
Okay, that's applicable on this one.
Is there any further? Is there any further discussion? Any further comments? No? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the forty-one Lyman Street special permit, site plan approval, and special permit for groundwater protection overlay district with the conditions outlined in Fred's letter? With the addition of valves being visibly marked in the field? With the addition of adding a condition to re-landscape the front of the property as outlined in the bylaws? With the addition of language to educate the drivers on preferred truck routes? With the inclusion of the waiver request for a reduction for, related to section seven zero nine dash zero thirty, off-street parking and mooting, a reduction in parking spaces to the site? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
So that was for the special permit and site plan approval and the special permit for groundwater?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, and the waiver.
And the waiver. Okay, before we take a vote, I just want to make sure we got everything, because this is a lot. We have the conditions that Fred outlined in his letter. We have the addition of the landscaping, the addition of the language for education, the addition of valves. We don't need to include the fire department. That is all part of the building permit process. And we have the addition of the waiver, the reduction for parking spaces. Did we discuss any other condition that we did not capture in that motion? Okay. All right, motion's moved and seconded. I will take a vote.
I'm sorry, who did second?
Call on favor? Repose? Okay, great. Thank you.
No, I'm Jeremy.
Jeremy, okay.
Madam Chair, my name is Jim Shore, resident of thirty-one Worldview Circle. And I'd like to have this hearing, the next item on the agenda, be continued based on an appeal that has been filed through the board.
Okay, let me open the hearing and then, yep. Just give us a minute to, we have a lot of paperwork here, just to resituate. Okay, does everyone have their paperwork situated, or do you need a minute?
I'm good.
Everyone's good? Okay. It is eight twenty. And next on the agenda, we have a public hearing for four twenty-five Whitney Street, oops, there's two streets there. For Whitney Street, special permit, site plan approval, and special permit per groundwater protection overlay district. I will read the public hearing notice that went out. The public hearing notice stated, in accordance with section seven dash zero three dash zero five zero A two and seven dash zero seven dash zero ten of the Northborough zoning bylaws, the Northborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on October seventeenth, twenty nineteen, at seven thirty at the Northborough Public Library at thirty-four Main Street, Northborough, Mass, to consider the special permit, site plan approval application, and special permit per groundwater protection overlay district of STARRIS AST for the proposed construction of two additions to an existing industrial building located at four twenty-five Whitney Street, map fifteen, parcel eight. The additions will contain approximately twenty thousand one hundred square feet and approximately three thousand three hundred seventy-five square feet respectively. Plans prepared by VHB are on file at the town's clerk office and the town planner's office. So, before we get started here, I wanted to state that I want to make sure that you have a fair hearing. But I also want to make sure that the planning board has all the information that they need in order to make an informed and smart decision on behalf of the town. So in my review of the application, I felt that the application includes expertise beyond anyone involved. And I would like to require that you conduct a peer review by a consultant to advise the planning board about this application at the applicant's expense, that the planning board would interview and select. Once that's all squared away, I think we would, you know, be in a better spot to make this a, if deemed to be an appropriate use and safe project, then we'd be in a good spot to, you know, work together and figure out how that works. I also want you to be aware that I do have some questions and concerns about the use, whether it's truly light manufacturing. So as part of that peer review, I would look to see data and facts that support the operations meet the use criteria as outlined in our bylaws. So I wanted to actually bring that to the board first before we get started and hear if there are any additional thoughts and whether or not you felt that we had the expertise to view this, to review this application, or if we felt like we would want a peer review.
I agree with the peer review because I started to do some background. You know, because this is a building with twelve-foot wall, so I wanted to look into the x-rays and research STARRIS. And I think to do our diligence, we would definitely need a peer review because I found myself reading publications from the National Council on Radiation Protection and white papers discussing accelerators and generators and control systems. But I, and you really have to build it properly to have the proper shielding. I mean, I've read so much, and I'm like, this is way above our expertise.
Any other comments?
I agree.
Anthony, do you have any comments?
The only thing I would say is that there are many factors to this site plan that are beyond, something I feel comfortable coming on that. I think it makes great sense to have either part of the review of this.
Do you have comments?
Yes, my name is Stephen Madassimar, here with the applicant. This is for a site plan review, so the use is not applicable. So I appreciate that if you have a fifty-three G account to review some aspect of a site plan review, you might discover that as we go through the plan. But I don't understand, it seems from what I was hearing that you want to delve into whether the use is permitted.
Not that the use is permitted, just that you meet the performance use standards of the, as the criteria is outlined in the bylaws.
That's not site plan review. There are a lot of use in the industrial, it's the industrial zoning district and processing is a lot of use. And the building inspector makes that determination of the zoning bylaw.
Okay, I would seek peer review to make sure that you meet the performance standards of the use as outlined. So there'll be noise, et cetera, as outlined in the bylaws.
Can you talk about that during the presentation of the plan?
I would expect data and facts to support it, not just walking through. And honestly, this application seems to lack specific, unless there's additional facts that I'm missing, I didn't have any facts or information on noise or process or anything really. So I would expect to see a lot more information, even traffic. I'd want to see traffic. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, if the board has other things.
In due respect, those are use regulations. So if we were here for a special plan of the use, you could consider all those. This is about the development of the site within the four quarters of the plan, or site plan review.
I just have one hand out here, and it says the applicant shall include estimated daily vehicle trips generated by proposed use. Like, we didn't get any traffic impact studies. I don't know.
So actually, I think, I believe our town council outlined that we would be able to have information about, let's see. So as part of section seven zero five zero four zero of the zoning bylaws, which sets performance standards for use as an industrial district, the standards govern noise and light and also specify additional performance requirements which we can provide a copy of. So we may ask for evidence that the proposed use or activity complies with the status performance standards. So that's what we're doing. If you want to present some information, then I think that may be helpful so that you can maybe hear some of the questions that we have, and that may help like craft what we would want. But with the understanding that we would expect a peer review as part of a condition to continue this, review of this application.
I think as we present, maybe the issues will present themselves rather than knowing them before we present anything.
You're welcome to present. Also, I did want to bring up that, as someone previously pointed out, that an appeal was filed for the ZBA's dimensional variance decision for four twenty-five Whitney Street. We can't discuss the appeal this evening other than stating an appeal has been filed, but town council did notify us that we would be able to proceed with the public hearing for the site plan approval and special permit application. So just that, to answer your question about that. Let's see. I think that's all the information that I'm able to give on the variance. So if you wanted to, was the board willing to hear the, review the application, hear the application tonight?
Could I just suggest something?
Sure.
Typically with peer review, you know, the board has exercised that in the past very sparingly because usually staff, you know, provides enough information on any of these applications. But you're, you decided as a board, after you've heard all of the, all of the information and the evidence, as to then whether or not you want to pursue peer review. And then you specifically talk about what it is that you need to have peer review for, so that we know what kind of staff, what kind of consultants to, you know, to reach out to and to get the process done.
So with that in mind, as the board reviews this application, could you think of maybe document some of the specific areas? Or if you feel that you need more information, or if you feel, what I want to do, my goal is to make sure that this planning board has all of the information they need to make an informed decision and a decision that's in the best interest of the town in Northborough. So if, as you listen to the presentation, if you could document that, and then at the end, we'll do that. Okay.
Thank you. I would hopefully present all of the information from my side. So my name is Stephen Madassimar, here with the project architect, operations link, which does business as STARRIS AST. We'll be receiving as our project team, Rich Whitehouse from VHB, the site design professionals for this project. Jerry Krasinski, he is the director of engineering facilities for STARRIS. Mike Nellie, he's the plan manager for existing STARRIS operations in town. Mr. Keith Monet, he's the project facilities engineer. He's with us this evening, and John Raposa, or a couple of associates as the project architect. So we've got a full team for questions from this board, and we can answer the questions that arise as we go over the site plan. As you mentioned in the notice, we have a site plan approval under section seven dash zero three zero five zero of the zoning bylaw, and a special permit pursuant to the groundwater protection overlay district for property located at four twenty-five Whitney Street. And one member of the board already mentioned concerns about technologies that may not be involved at this property that perhaps are concerns of the other property at four thirty-five. That is not what we're presenting on, that's not what's before this board, the operations at four thirty-five. We can talk about the use of four twenty-five pursuant to the site plan application. Such property is located in industrial zoning districts and in the groundwater overlay district area three. Also, as mentioned in the notices, to construct additions to an existing building that consists of approximately forty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-three square feet. One addition will be approximately twenty thousand one hundred square feet, and the other addition, the smaller one, will be approximately three thousand three hundred seventy-five. They're showing on the plan, of course, the larger addition on the left, the smaller addition to the rear. We did apply for, as was mentioned, as I was going to disclose to the board, and proceed a variance from the zoning board of appeals at a meeting on August twenty-seventh for dimensional variance from the site yard setback. This board is probably aware of the criteria, the strict criteria that are required for a ward of appeals to make certain findings before they can issue a dimensional variance. And the ZBA common has satisfied all of that criteria to issue the decision, which is followed in the clerk's office, town clerk's office. And as you mentioned, appeal was followed, and the mayor of the theater followed an appeal on the land court on October fifteenth. That was Tuesday. We're aware of that appeal. I did note in the zoning bylaw that it states that for the decision criteria, any variances required from the zoning board of appeals have been granted. It has been granted, but it's not appealed, and you have that opinion of your own town council that we could proceed. The project was also reviewed with groundwater advisory committee at the meeting on October eighth. We did, and I know it was late notice to this board, discover in our review of the specifications for chowders that would be installed on the site, that we eliminated a chemical from the list. So we immediately informed Mr. McField of that mission, and he has noted that in the letter to this board. So we are complying with the provisions to groundwater overlay and understand that the advisory committee will prepare for review of that additional chemical or similar review as the other chemicals that we disclosed, which were relatively, you know, for industrial use, not too significant, if you're all judges of that. And with that, if we may, through the chair, go over the site plan for the board as to any concerns you might have about the proposed redevelopment of this existing building.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
So Rich Whitehouse, VHB, with the site designers for the project. Stephen mentioned there's an existing warehouse building here, approximately forty-six thousand square feet to the east, the associated parking and shipping and receiving areas at the site. The rest of the site is mostly lawn, wooded area. Sites currently served by sanitary service, currently served by septic system on site. The proposed project intends expanding into that area, and one of the two areas that Stephen had mentioned. So the project intends to also remove that septic system and make a connection to the town's sewer system a little further up the street. Additional expansion to the area, as Stephen mentioned, will be additional warehouse space provided a couple of times, extra loaded up areas. The chowders that Stephen mentioned are situated in the rear of the property. We're also including a soundwatering wall to help some of the noise mitigation from that area. In general, the site layout is, aside from the building expansions, remains very similar to what it is today. The parking area, mainly for employees, is still located in the same location towards the street. It's a little smaller in size now. The shipping and receiving area to the rear is is about the exact, you know, just about the same size as what's there today, and facilitating the water docks on the east side of the open here. In that paved area, currently, stormwater is managed by a series of catch basins and pipes, and the closed range system is directed to an outfall that directs the spore off right into the equipment stream at the rear of the site. Part of some of the improvements that were made into the property, there will be stormwater management upgrades in the form of treatment of stormwater with deep sun protect basins and a water quality unit, that all the paved area will be directed through before discharge to the same location. The additional previous area from this expansion is being, keep rate runoff increases being mitigated by an infiltration basin at the rear of that expansion as well, so that all the infiltrates runoff will be natural to go to that. Site lighting is intended to be the fair and typical perimeter pole lighting, all the way to back the little property, we've got a photometrics study done to ensure that the site's even lit, but no additional spillage beyond property line to the street. And then landscaped improvements are made consistent with requirements of the bylaws, some trees and shrubs along the street line, some in the parking lot, and then snow storage areas provided here, where the existing current lines being pulled back in, this will be an escarp area, this will be over here, of the shipping and receiving area, it's also intended to be landscaped. In addition, the proposed layout is providing the required number of, the required number of parking stalls, as required by the bylaw, which is a little bit more than what the applicant intends to use, or tends to need, so their facility is expected to acquire twenty parking stalls, we've got twenty-three in this front part in the area with two accessible stalls, another improvement to the site where today the stalls in the entrance to the building are not compliant, and then the remainder of the stalls are located at the rear of the property to achieve the thirty required hours.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. There is also, I don't know where I have it, is there a concrete plant on here somewhere?
So there will be a, it's a temporary concrete plant strictly for the purposes of constructing, building expansion, its footprint, its anticipated footprint is highly in yellow, this has been fully discussed with the conservation commission and the groundwater advisory committee, and PHB will be working with, with the owner, and with their contractor that's responsible for that plant, to develop details and specifications for the operations and maintenance of the plant, but also sedimentation protection and so on. We'll compile that information, and we're intending to, you know, to review it with the conservation administrator, the town engineer, and also the board of the conservation commission for this, for the ultimate approval of the intended protection measures in that. So it's, the attempts to locate it fully within the paved area today, so we've got full control over runoff from that area, it's also, because of the physical constraints of the site, one of the only areas, or really the only area where something of that size could be located, where it wouldn't be in the way of what they're exactly trying to ensure.
Okay, anything from conservation on this concrete plant?
Well, I spoke to the conservation agent, and she confirmed that the commission did issue, or this plant issued work conditions, and we're at home now, they did close a hearing. The outstanding discussion revolved around the temporary concrete plant, as was a concern of mine on review of the plan for the groundwater advisory committee, the applicant has agreed to do whatever the conservation commission agent intentionally require in order to use that plant on a temporary basis, as far as operation maintenance goes, that's written into the order, because that's a further review of that, to confirm that they have met with the staff, and the staff have been satisfied that they were not acting as appropriately as considered, and then to, then you would approve the outline that approved by staff.
Okay, so, I just got this tonight, this, your letter from groundwater, did anybody, did everybody have a chance to read this?
No.
From groundwater, okay. Did anyone take anyone down here? Okay, so.
Do you want to have Fred go through that here, like he has with the other letters tonight?
Uh, no, because I, I mean, there's a lot of detail here, just with the packet, I didn't even get to read the responses, so I don't, if you don't mind just taking a minute to, if the board just wants to quickly scan this. Just a quick question, the long-term pollution prevention plan, you read that this is yours, or you read it, or you? Okay. I know this packet is, did you get to finish?
Oh, I did, because I was at the groundwater meeting, so I guess you got a little off the handle here, groundwater.
Michelle, did you have anything?
Uh, yeah, I did think.
Melissa, you have it? You have it, Anthony, you have it? Okay. Okay, so we have that, and we also have the fire chief's letter, if everyone had a chance to read that. All set? Yeah, you read it? All set? Okay. Any other presentation?
Just note that the, the groundwater advisory letter, paragraph four, they cover the applicant has met all the requirements of section seven dash zero seven dash zero ten, three, C, four, of the zoning bylaw, which allows for a special permit for industrial development. Now, I know that was just based on all the chemicals that we had disclosed in the area of the recent, um, so, or that included in the letter.
Thank you, yes, I think we just lack information on the concrete plant in this letter, or any other letter from conservation, I don't think we have, oh, Michelle.
I just want to ask a question about that, is it really necessary for you to have that?
Yeah, I, obviously, that's a method of construction, right, so that's a, that's a temporary measure during construction.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, so, one of the benefits of that is it will reduce the number of trucks that arrive, we decide, bring, deliver the concrete, so, but for the fact that the construction is, for, not others can speak to the, the construction, I don't know myself, so, but it's subject to review of the groundwater, the conservation commission, it's not a permanent fixture for a site plan development, but I don't, you just give two lines, that's sort of.
The, the big benefit to having the plant located on-site is strict quality control of the concrete mix, there are other benefits to it, but that's, that's the main reason, substantial volume of concrete that will be, you know, necessary for this type of construction, and because of the use inside of the building, it's very important to have good quality control, and it's important that.
And when you say temporary, how long is the temporary?
Just, uh, for twelve months or so.
For a year, it's temporary? Yeah.
Something doesn't regulate matters of construction.
They do hours of operation, right, for construction, you can set hours.
What are the hours of operation of the plant?
Do you, do you tell me how long?
Seven to seven, I think?
There, there's, I was hoping, but there are all types of uses, there is two areas, one is trades within the buildings, and one is site work that is generally regulated by the earthwork board, which is yet to be sure permanently, I've been before, again, that typically is seven to five Monday through Friday, and seven to noon on Saturday, and no work on Sundays or holidays. This is a little bit unique in the amount of concrete and the concrete plant, and the temporary operation, I'm not sure, and Bob and I have not discussed it yet, as to whether that operation of concrete plant falls under the interior of the building or the exterior, because of its construction, the walls of the building, but it's part of what we would consider normal site work, you know, operating plant or concrete, so, I think that the bylaw allows for slightly different hours of operation inside the building than outside, but that's the building's requirement.
And what is hours inside the building?
Inside the building? Um, I can't speak to that right now, but in terms of general construction, construction equipment may be operated by a paid contractor between the hours of seven and seven daily, except Sunday and the holidays. Anything outside the hours specified that I just mentioned may be allowed, but with permission from the building inspector. So there's an extenuating circumstance where they would need a overnight court, for example, I, I don't know what their plan is.
Right, right.
But if we can schedule it for one day, it's, I don't know, but we have the authority to extend it, but generally it's seven to seven.
Thank you.
No holidays, most of the time.
And inside the building, we, what is the proposed hours of operation inside the building?
About twenty-four hours.
So a twenty-four seven operation?
We've got the trucks coming and going, is that also twenty-four seven?
Yeah.
What are the average few trucks that arrive, for the shipments? This is from the annual, according to these, these, the hours?
Yeah, cautions, twenty-nine hours, just seven to six.
Twenty-four, that would be seven.
I'm sorry, I missed your conversation.
I, I think that I may have spoken, but I would refer to the hours of operation of the construction, not hours of operation of the business.
Oh, I got, when you said inside versus outside, I thought there was a distinction.
When I said inside the building, I was referring to the tradesmen construction, working inside the building.
I understand.
While the, you, like, the cost.
That makes sense, thank you.
I was not referring to the hours of operation of the business.
So we, so we don't have, in order, there isn't a restriction on any business as far as their hours of operation?
But as part of a condition of a site plan, we could put hours of operation?
Um, well, we don't, um, we, well, yeah, we don't have a bylaw that says that you have to operate within, you know, a certain timeframe, like, as an example, companies originally thought they wanted to operate twenty-four, seven, and so, you know, there was, there was no limit put in there, in their, in their decision. The medical clinics that, that both came to town, they were part of a live site plan, I mean, originally, you didn't know that they were going to be the medical, the two medical clinics out, but the, so, you know, the, the ninety twenty, but there's, you know, there, there can't be any restriction on their hours of operation, because we as a town don't restrict it in our bylaws.
I think we've put conditions of operation on other site plans in the past, I think we just, I'd be interested to find out more about that.
Can I have that, I feel, as well?
Sure.
Chair, when we said twenty-four hours, that's the internal operations, the external operations, delivery, that's seven to six, you know, seven eight to six.
Oh, okay.
One, one day to five.
Got it.
So the processing internal, would be twenty-four hours, but not the external delivery.
Okay, so we have before us, we have the letter from the fire chief, we have the groundwater, we don't have conservation, earthworks is also required.
Yeah, earthwork is always last, earthwork waits until the planning board or the ZBA should their decision, and then we have the applicant pile of their work, and then conservation commission runs, you know, completely separate from the planning board of zoning board.
Okay. Are there other questions that the board would like answered? I guess I'll start down here.
I would just make a very comment, I'd like to, I don't know if the board plans are doing what they're going to continue here or not, but the fire chief wrote in his letter that he has several concerns regarding that need to be addressed, such as fire flow test, and alarm system requirements, and the response was, no problem, it's on the to-do list, so I think that's something that I think should probably be worked out before the board approves, anything?
Those are all, again, just like with forty-one ninth street.
Yeah. Yeah.
The, the fire chief, uh, you know, submitted this review letter, the applicant reviewed it, the applicant has the email, um, that you all have.
Yeah.
That he's addressed the fire chief's concerns, and the fire chief responded back to me that he's fine with there, with, with how they addressed his comments. So, the, again, the fire chief's comments also have to do with the actual construction of the building, and, and again, just like with forty-one line, that's with review by, uh, the building department and the fire department, at the, at the time of, um, building permit, when building plans are submitted. Like, a building permit can't be issued until a fire flow test are done, we've got to do this better than I can, but, you know, the fire flows, sprinkler, um, designs, sprinkler inspections.
I was also thinking, why, because, in case of emergency, because that's a maze, I, all I was thinking is, is it emergency in the maze, and how do people get out? Would people actually go into the maze and let the process?
In, inside the building?
Yeah, inside the building. Or is it on conveyor belt, all the materials, do you guys, does anybody know?
We can, we can give you a presentation on the internal use of the building and the operations of that.
That'd be great.
A lot comes in and goes on a conveyor belt, this process?
Uh, like, rather than plan manager, it will be on a conveyor system, so there won't be any, any people entering the area. Pallets will be conveyed into the area to be exposed to the X-rays sterilized, the plump on conveyor and move the forecast for the plant.
So would you mind explaining the process a little bit, what this exactly is?
Um, so it is a, um, medical device sterilization process, where, um, device manufacturers will, will manufacture their, their different items, Band-Aids, gloves, um, any, think of any, any medical device, they'll ship it to us for, for sterilization through use of X-ray. Pallets will come in, will be, they'll be put on this conveyor system that will, uh, convey the product into the X-ray area where it will be exposed to the X-ray, sterilized, will be moved through the conveyor system. Um, forecast will take it off the conveyor system and, and, uh, shipped out, that's the process.
So the conveyor system goes through the maze, not people?
That's right.
And so the maze itself is, it's the, the walls are twelve feet thick, concrete walls through the maze?
On the inside of, on, on the inside of the conveyor system, yeah.
So on the entry and exits, are there, what's there to block? I guess what's going through that maze, just radiation is going through it?
No, the, uh, the, the maze is containing the radiation that is, well, of the X-rays that is generating the event, so the, the maze is part of the containment of the X-rays.
So it must not stop at the doors, what keeps it in from, there must be an entrance to put the material through, so are there things to prevent it from escaping out into the open?
The, the maze is, the maze is allowing the pallets in the conveyor system to bring the pallets in front of the X-ray, and the maze is preventing the X-rays from escaping from the, um, internal source of X-ray.
And how does that not get outside?
The co... So, yeah, so, um, like, again, when, when the pallet goes in front of the accelerator that generates the X-ray, the X-ray pallet is in a straight line, it will go to the pallet, and on, on the other side will be concrete container that will contain the rays from, from penetrating to the outside.
And does this, it, it, does this exist in other facilities, in, that you have, or?
Um, it is, it's currently, um, it's, they're currently being constructed, we do have some, yes.
Some in Sweden.
Oh, in Sweden?
But I think you're starting to build them in the I D six.
That's correct.
So there's none of that operation at this time?
Um, there are in, in your...
Do you know how many linear feet of twelve-foot walls there will be once completed?
I'm sorry, wouldn't be able to be built twelve foot, or this, it's about, it, the twelve-foot walls are the main radiation area, not the whole shield, it's, it's twelve-foot walls, just, just the main area where the, the, the X-ray is being exposed to the product. And those twelve-foot, uh, thick walls are about, they're twenty-foot long, there's two on each side and one in the center.
There's two on each side? Do I hear you correctly? So is there two twelve-foot walls, or is there one on each side of it?
In, in the exposure area?
Yeah.
Where the, the main radiation is, you're gonna have walls on the two of them, on the either side of the pallets, and you're gonna have one in front.
So on the impact side, where the accelerator is pointing, there's one wall there?
Yes.
Okay, and then there's one wall on there?
On, on the side, yes, and then you have the wall hiding as well. So the, the thick walls are the area where the, where the, the main beams, the...
Twenty feet, in length?
And the maze has thinner walls, because your radiation drops off as you go through the maze.
Yeah.
That radiation only travels in straight lines, so as the radiation bounces through the maze to your point, there's, you can stand at the door going into, into the maze, and you don't see any radiation at that point. Because it's all been bounced into the, the walls of the maze before it can leak the shield. That's, that's the reason for the maze.
And what creates this radiation, what is the machine?
It's a Lydian accelerator, that literally excels electrons to nearly to speed of light, and that hits a plate of candle, and that, when you get the electrons to the candle plate, on the backside of the plate comes off that trace.
Is that the same, is that an electron beam type thing, that emits, or, is that an electron beam? That, I guess I don't know what that is, the, this Lydian accelerator, what is that?
The, the Lydian accelerator creates the X-ray, electron beam is a different technology from X-ray.
Oh, but not a part of this applica, not, not a part of the process?
Ele- electron beam is not part of this process.
Do you know how many kilowatts of power are needed to run the accelerator?
Six, seven point five. Seven point, seven point five M U B, it's six, six hundred kilowatts.
To run it? To run this machine, the six hundred?
To follow the seven point five M U B rate.
Okay.
Is it the Rotatron, Rotatron?
That's a different manufacturer.
Look, I have a question with the, the walls, are they absorbing, or are they...
They're shielding.
Block and shield, so where is that radiation going?
It's, it's, it's not penetrating to the outside, so the state of Massachusetts allows for till no run per hour, and, and the shield will reduce that to a point of normal per hour.
And so it's, it's the target, there's along sides, but what about closed ceilings?
Same, same thing, the, the race, the race route is straight, right, in straight lines, but the bunker is designed to, to not allow penetration of the X-rays beyond it. Everything is, is contained within the, within the shield, and that's, that's why the shield is designed to the thickness that it is. It's too large for proper shielding of, of that, right?
Okay, so the walls are twelve feet thick?
Yes, sir.
But the floors and the ceilings are not?
Well, the, the floor, the floor is into the ground through the air and, and the wall. Uh, the, the ceilings are twelve? Ceilings are twelve.
I'm sorry, the ceilings will be twelve feet across as well?
Correct, yeah.
And, and so beyond these two walls that are twenty feet long, and, and so I assume there's still, there's more maze that's out of the area, are those walls kind of really thick as well, or are they normal walls?
So, so the X-ray walls are twelve foot thick, as you go through the way, the, the maze, the, the walls are, are, are not as thick, because the maze is, um, the, the maze is performing the purpose of the twelve-foot thick wall, so, so you have to go into the maze, as you go deeper into the maze, and, and you're going, you're going through that maze, those walls are designed to, to contain the rays within as well.
So they get progressively thicker, or they, so you go to twenty feet to, I mean, twelve feet to ten feet to something, something, or?
Yeah, so, that's correct. They're progressively thicker, they're getting closer to the source.
The technology gets turned on, right, you set it on off.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, so if you turn it on, uh, that's correct.
And you guys have one of these in Sweden that's up there?
Uh, Switzerland, yes.
And no other even being built in the US, or, they're not, this is literally the first in the US?
No, we have a few others that are being constructed.
But nothing in operation?
I'm sorry?
Nothing in operation?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
Where else do you have them, that they're being constructed?
Where, in, in, in Dillon, in Dillon, Illinois.
Big end matter of history of Massachusetts, of course.
That's just why I feel like we need an expert, just to like...
And I remind, we know that you're evaluating the use, we, we're happy to talk about the use, but...
You need to meet the criteria of performance here.
Site time review, though, we just went, you know, I don't know how often site time review, we're giving internal operations of business process, you know, doesn't have sufficient marking or landscape or external...
Well, let's talk about the noise, actually, so you have, let's see, chillers, number one. Now, I, just a question, why are the chillers located outside of the warehouse?
Why are they located outside the warehouse?
Versus where the, I assume the, the maze is in the corner, but the chillers, what are, what are the chillers?
The chillers are intended to go on this location here, if we are, I'm not talking as far back.
But why, what is it cooling, how, like, what is a chiller doing, what is it?
The chiller is, is cooling, is controlling climate within the shield that is here.
Oh, it's just so far away, is that...
It's spatial constraints on the site, kind of, you know, push it towards allocation, but it also lends itself while keeping it, uh, not only screened from the road, but also as far from the, the residences over here as, as, you know, as warranted, without going out into the name of the street.
Okay, and what is the noise level, and any sort of vibration, ground vibration from the chillers?
Do you, do you create, you know, create a barrier, what is that called, like, technology? Yeah, it's, the, we're showing a sound absorbing wall, it's showing an updated version of the layout and materials, when it's recently updated, um, so the idea is that between the chillers and the residences, uh, that, that sound wall is intended to reduce significantly the noise level.
So what is the noise level?
We can, we can present on that.
General Mayor Fong, that was an issue raised at the scale of plan that shows decimal rating. So right near the machine, seventy-eight, as you, whether way you get more decimals to drop, and there's a diagram that shows that by the time you get it to the residence, it's about six hundred feet away. Here at forty decimals, and to equate that to, except, forty decimals is a library, it's a computer. Uh, fifty is normal conversation, uh, sixty is, uh, sort of like an advertisement, then obviously, because it's, it's not doubling, it's a lot would make difference, um, and so that, that diagram there, uh, just shows, uh, dissipation of decimals, and it's actually conservative, because we've not taken into account the burns or the vegetation, it's just a straight path calculation. Can I just know your name, I'm sorry? John Rabelsen. John, okay.
And any other noise associated with the business, the plant plus the concrete plant as well? So I guess I'm looking for a full picture, noise impact in that area. So I see that's related to the chillers, what is the full impact of noise?
The only other anticipated noise would be generated in sight of the truck traffic, and that's located all the way in the far side of the site behind the building.
Okay.
And you know, you know, a lot, we're knowing daytime business hours.
Well, you're gonna have concrete trucks going in and out, so I just wanna know...
Only for the construction here.
Of a year, so I would wanna know, like, what's the noise impact of any sort of construction? Plus, the building itself, does that have any noise, does that generate noise, no?
A, a concrete plant, would that have a noise impact on?
It, it'll generate noise, yeah, just like normal construction equipment would also generate noise, so...
Okay, nothing excessive, more excessive, in excess of that?
No, nothing where, where, uh, but again, just, that's only generally the construction to do as a project. Construction activity would probably be, uh...
In line with that?
Well...
Running a concrete plant?
Yeah, I would think so. Do you have typical construction activity noises?
Um, any carbon dioxide emissions from the electricity? I don't know if that's something you know?
I don't know.
And if there's no existing operation in the US, what are the regulations that are followed for state and federal regulations regarding this?
Hi, my name is Mark Alas, I'm also here with, uh, STARS, I'm a, uh, operations leader for a number of facilities in these, um, the, uh, just to clarify, STARS does not operate any large-scale X-ray machines in the US, but there are obviously X-ray machines all over the US in terms of smaller scale, um, and, uh, they are all regulated by the state regulator that runs that, I believe, here in Massachusetts, it's the Department of Health, and it's similar, which is the same agency that would regulate, uh, the existing operation that we have here in, in Northrop, uh, which, while it's a different technology, is very similar in terms of the radiation aspects and shielding aspects, um, so I, I did wanna just add some clarity, too, to Mike's response when he said about, you know, hey, what stops things from coming out the door? So the, the, the shield itself, the maze that we're referring to, is built in elaborate design so that when radiation energy travels, it, it travels in straight lines and will bounce in ninety-degree angles. So the, the construction of the shield itself is built so that by the time any energy gets to the exit or the open exit for the conveyor system would be, it has dissipated to the point where it's well below, uh, Massachusetts regulations, um, and that's monitored and, and regulated, so, um, you know, there are similar operations here, are other operations, very similar, breaking story. So there's something that you can actually see, look at, if you'd like to, you know, to, to see how that works. But it's still radiation processing, um, it's just not, the radiation energy is not born from radioactive material, like in a counter processing facility, it's born from a conversion of electricity, which is, you know, uh, has a lot of benefit in terms of, uh, the way that it operates, because it can be completely turned off when not used, so there's not a, you know, not an asset in there that's diminishing, when there isn't things to protect.
Thank you, that's...
Yeah, um, radiation monitor, you monitor the inside of the building, do you ever do tests on the outside of the building, too? Just to make sure that it's not coming through, I know you say it's not gonna come through, but is there like a handheld testing unit, where you could test just to make sure it's...
There is, and, yeah, the gentleman spoke about the benefit of the concrete plant on site, and he uses the first strict quality control, you know, the, the cell will be built under quality control aspects, and one of the very first things that happens when the machine is brought online, is it's brought online at very low power, and radiation monitoring is conducted on the outside of that shield as power is increased over time, to make sure that the machine is, that to make sure that the shield is effective in its design, and that there were no quality voids or anything that could, uh, that would result in us not meeting the regulations with regards to radiation dose on the outside of that. So it's a very, it's a very structured monitored process before the machine would be put into, into service in terms of a full power situation.
And then it could probably be tested, like, yearly or every other year, or, just to make sure? Because like what you said about the last applicant, there could be cracks, like, say, those are, like, you could get cracks in the building, just to make sure.
Sure, and usually the regulations will guide that, and I'm honestly not familiar with the state regulations, an annual radiation survey, we call that. Um, in the gamma radiation operations, we would perform that anytime radioactive material is added to the facility, of course, this is very different, because we're not dealing with radioactive material in those limits, um, but we certainly would be, you know, it, it's in our best interest, obviously, to make sure that the machine is, is constantly working. Twelve-foot concrete is pretty thick, we, we understand that, um, so we understand, you know, why that would raise an eyebrow and, and cause questions a lot of, um, but it is an X-ray process, it's, you know, the, the best way I could, uh, express it in layman's terms is it's a very, very large airport baggage scanner, okay, so it's just like when you're putting your bags on the conveyor at the airport for, for scanning, we're putting pallets of critical medical product on a conveyor to be brought through and sterilized, but of course, you know, please, I don't wanna be misleading, there's a very different size of power, which is why the building is so much larger and thicker, to present the same level of safety to our workers, as well as General Butler.
Can I, can I go back to the, the, the sound levels again, from the chillers? And just, I don't remember who walked me through the differences, and what the increase was, whether it was forty or fifty, please, can you just talk about, again, from the distance to the closest residence?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
So the chillers are located here, and based on their spec, two chillers generate seventy-eight decimals.
You put up a, a sound absorbing wall, which decreases decimals by about twelve, fifteen decimals. So then, at that point, those decimals decrease, uh, six decimals for every doubling of the distance. So that's just, so at two hundred feet, it's forty-nine, fifty. At four hundred feet, it's forty-three, and at six hundred feet, it's forty. And equating that to normal sounds that you hear, forty, you equate that to a library, a small computer humming. Um, fifty, normal conversation, and then sixty, we like air conditioning.
So, for example, so in our bylaws, it says we shouldn't, there shouldn't be an ambient noise level increase of more than five decimals. So you're saying that that's within that range?
An increase of five? But I had a- Was that the base number on that?
It's on seven forty-seven?
I'd like to shed a little light on that in the form of our talk.
Sure.
In the past, what we have had a project in industrial district where noise is concerned, there is a section of the bylaw that requires an ambient noise study to be established at the time the building construction is complete and before the business goes into operation. And then that threshold of any increase beyond a certain amount is established, and, and routine tests are required, um, noise study outside a certain location beyond the building so that ambient, that ambient noise level is established once the building is built to see if the, prior to operation of the chillers or whatever else you would be concerned about. In the front, in the past, it's been, um, air conditioning units on top of industrial buildings that are large and they tend to extend in the north end fairly far, and it has affected some residents. And then they establish that ambient level prior to the operation, and then in the large and after operation, there is this complaint, the applicant, the owner of the property, also for modern, making changes to the operation of the, whatever it is, to reduce the level, whether it's mufflers or not turning up as high. There's several of these that they can do.
So this, this project's a little unique in terms of that because there's two phases, right? So I'd be as equally concerned about what level of noise might be generated from the concrete plant itself, and that's, I guess, something you-
I can answer that. If you look on page forty-seven, okay, there's a list of five conditions under subsection C, where this particular noise, this noise restriction does not apply. And it's pretty clear, construction maintenance activities between seven and seven. Okay, so the concrete plant, I can't enforce any maintenance restrictions. Also, when we do the before and after, um, noise management, you know, set for understanding that motor vehicles, which are registered beyond the road, are also exempt from this regulation. So it's, it would be normal operations without vehicles or without construction vehicles. And yes, I do have a sound here.
Just as an example, in, in the past, the planning board, um, there, there were other properties, but specifically the ones that you might be aware of, um, on Railroad Drive, also Lime Street, but the, the access to physical building, New Core, you know, is off of Railroad Drive. Um, before New Core, when New Core first came to town, um, you know, the, the noise level was, I mean, excuse me, there was study was required. Um, there was a lot of concern from the investors that, you know, right over the railroad tracks. And, um, and then there was, so after they were up and operating for a few years, they changed the, um, the EHBAC systems on the, on the roof, and there was an issue. We received, you know, the town received complaints from the neighbors. Um, the company was notified, you know, adjustments were made, you know, between the building inspector and the company. Um, more recently, A.D. Isle, get them shelves on the board, Amy, I think, might have been on the board when that was first proposed. And, um, that was one of the first companies out on Bartlett Street, when Bartlett Street, when the, you know, the eastern side of Bartlett Street started to be, uh, developed. So there was a noise study that was required, um, at A.D. Isle. So we had like a, a before and after, so that we had something to, to go by. I think, I, off the top of my head, I don't remember, FedEx had to do it, but across the street at three oh one Bartlett, um, also was required to do a, you know, an initial noise, um, study. And, uh, and that's not, you know, fully occupied yet, so there, there hasn't been any issues on that particular building. So those were part of the, of the site plan approval process.
Has there been a traffic impact study? Is there traffic?
There is.
No?
The anticipated truck traffic was ten to twenty per day. And as an admission for us, anticipated part of the man of twenty, certainly employees of the facility, so. Lots of the traffic going into the site.
This is a, I think, a certain information, to that bridge.
Yeah, also important to know that, you know, the truck traffic will, will be directed towards Berlin because of the six hundred feet of damage that's chasing to the site, although it will be empty.
Okay, um, I do wanna see if there's any comments from the public here tonight? Yes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and, uh, good evening, Madam Chair, and the, the planning board. Uh, my name is Jim Shore, I live at thirty-four Coolidge Circle, and I've lived in Northborough for the last twenty-two some odd years. Uh, I have some expertise in this area, I spent the last thirty years in the medical device and heavy regulated industry, uh, so I'm very familiar with this technology, or at least the sterilization process. Um, so I hi- I highly applaud and highly recommend that you get a peer review to help better understand the technology and what you're asking for, what they're looking to do. Um, I've been doing audits of medical device companies and sterilization companies, uh, over the last eighteen years, so I'm very familiar with this, uh, their approach. And, uh, I have several certifications as certified biomedical auditor, as a quality auditor. Um, I also spent fifteen years in the Marine Corps, I'm a Desert Storm veteran. I only bring that up because of the hearing loss and some of the sensitivity, uh, that I have in my hearing due to high frequency aircraft and live fire that I experienced while I was in the service. So I'm very sensitive to decimals at high frequencies that we're talking about, such as the chiller. Um, though I respect the legal counsel decision to hold this hearing, I am, I wanna be on record that I'm disappointed that the hearing was conducted based on the appeal that was filed, well within the timeline as, uh, per the law. And, uh, again, we're trying to protect the neighborhood and making sure that things are done correctly. Um, I think the variance and the appeal was submitted, uh, that the company requested is self-inflicted. They knew well ahead of time that they would need a variance, uh, based on their actions, and it's all documented in the appeal based on the timeline and the dates, uh, the new information before they bought the property. And, uh, I think that it's, uh, in the best interest of the town to do the due diligence that you're doing, asking the questions, and making sure that you get all the information. Uh, one other note, I wanna be on record of saying that my piece of property is not six hundred yard, six hundred feet away, I'm approximately three hundred feet away. Uh, my, I own two pieces of property, one where my house is, and then I own another piece of acre, uh, behind, uh, the aqueduct and on the other side of the railroad. And I use that property for my own personal use to escape the noise that I have every day. So I use that property to have some peace and quiet. So it's impeding on my best interest and my, my welfare. Uh, I am concerned about the amount of construction. I didn't hear exactly how long the timeline was, how long was the timeline, too, for the construction?
One year.
One year. So we're going to live with more, uh, traffic, more noise, and a lot of extra trucks going in and out, uh, on top of what we've already experienced with four twenty-nine Whitney Street. I think there's, the neighborhood is, is pretty well exhausted by having to defend itself, uh, from this situation. And, uh, and for the record, uh, I was told that, uh, STERIS did have the opportunity to buy four twenty-nine Whitney Street years ago, uh, but chose not to. So they could have alleviated this altogether. And if it's such a big deal that they need this facility, I'm sure that they could relay out it to reduce the footprint so they wouldn't need, uh, that amount of space. It's running twenty-four seven, uh, I'm sure they can have, I'm sure they're very smart, they're eleven billion dollar company, I'm sure they could reduce the footprint, uh, to make it a little more efficient.
Okay.
A little more interesting, if you could.
Did you have a comment as well?
No, I'm asking him a question, he says-
Oh, no, just direct to me, please.
But he just said efficient, if it's smaller or bigger, that has nothing to do with efficiency.
Okay, are there any other comments? Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, do you have, in hearing this and some of the comments, do you have, are there components of this plan? Do you feel prepared to make a decision on this plan?
I saw a couple of them.
Oh, I'm sorry, please, yes.
On the, um, construction element of the flooring, is it, is it on this plan that the flooring is twelve feet thick? And the, the materials on it, and?
We don't get the interior on the site. I don't think we have flooring shown on these, any material built on it? No, the, the site plan is intended to show the footprint of the expansion. The, uh, the plans are advanced for the building expansions themselves, they will show that information.
Anything? Michelle, anything else to me?
Um, I was just gonna suggest to continue the hearing until we got the results from, because I think Fred, you have a couple of meetings you need to wrap up on, right? You have a November meeting with, um, Groundwater that we need to complete, ready?
As I, you can, then, uh, if you remember, after the Groundwater Public Meeting, the Groundwater Committee tells, they have to continue knowing that there will be some potentially toxic, perhaps, uh, incorporated to the chiller. And that, what we was unknown, the level, how we was unknown. And my opinion that if you go back to the Groundwater Committee, have that, ask that added to the material that was stored on site, and that it was verified proper containment. The next Groundwater Advisory Committee is scheduled for Friday, so unless the board wants to take action without that information, I would suggest that you continue the hearing, allow the opportunity to back to the Groundwater Committee, with that information, have a review, and actually have supplemental provisions of that, that you have.
Okay, and then my other question is, the reason I brought up, because Chief, um, Parenti's letter was dated on September twenty-fourth, and yours came in today, probably just on the seventeen, today was that Thursday, um, just about response to his letter. So I just wanna make sure that his letter says, okay, we're all good, you know, because he does say we have several concerns, right? So I think it's just worthy to sort of close the loop on his letter, saying I've discussed it with them, you know?
Yeah, he, he has.
Okay, because I didn't see that.
I mean, I, I, while you're talking to him.
Oh.
Um, I mean, he, the, um, both with forty-one and this, um, there's, uh, you have an email from, actually, um, Mr. Whitehouse, um, where he has three responses-
Right.
-to the fire chiefs, and that was applied to the fire chief, and I forwarded that to the fire chief, and then spoke with him, and he's good with that.
Okay.
If you want something in writing, I can give that in writing, too, if there's not a, a problem, if you want back to the file.
Okay. Um, who else was on the table? And Fred, you're gonna meet with the conservation agent regarding the temporary concrete plant, right?
That, that process involves strictly the concrete plant.
Yeah.
I don't anticipate that that's gonna happen, um, prior to the closing of the year. It would be something that we would do, um, as the construction gets nearer, and, but before construction starts.
Okay. Okay. And then I guess my question to the applicant is, um, if it would just bring the neighbors and the board peace of mind of peer review process, what would you begin, why would you not agree to it? Is it that you just think it's unnecessary, or is it that you just don't think?
I only disagree with that before the hearing even started, we were just gonna decide it's a peer review. I, as Tom Claire mentioned, every thing what I've done to this one, something, some topic is discovered that you find lacking in information, there was a presumption, for instance, that on sound levels, we hadn't even presented that, so if you found something that was lacking, then you find a need for peer review. I don't know what it is. As it was described, it was the use, but as I've been saying, site plan isn't about, you know, this is an industrial zoning district, the use is allowed, it's not a special permit for, uh, proposed operations. But, no, I, I don't object to peer reviews of some topic that's subject to the jurisdiction of the site plan review, whatever the board found was lacking from our presentation on the site plan. But just caution about regulating the use through site plan.
So I don't think that we're looking to regulate a use through a site plan. I think that we've been told that we're able to confirm that you meet the use criteria. Additionally, we've been told that the zoning interpretation request form is just for informational purposes only. It's not necessarily, um, the approval of a use. And, I'm not done. In addition to that, I did attend the ZBA hearing and noticed that you were quite strong in telling the ZBA that they weren't allowed to talk about the use, and now you're telling us we're not allowed to talk about the use. At some point, somebody's gotta talk about this use. So that, Bob, you've made your zoning determination on this interpretation request form, but we've also been told by town council that it's for informational purposes only. So what I would like to do is make sure that if this is the use, and that the process actually fits the use, first of all, I don't have any, I had no information about the process until now. I would like to understand that the process fits the use, and on top of that, fits our use criteria, which is a part of our bylaws. So that is what we're asking for, not to regulate the use through site plan review. Um, on top of that, I feel like we're missing information. I had no stats or data or facts or proof in my packet, so I would look to see that, um, any sort of supporting evidence. I, I, I hear the words you're saying, but I'd like to see the facts on paper for many of these things. I don't know if the board found items that they would like more information on. I have my own list, I don't know if other people wrote down things that they were interested in hearing. I'd like to hear from the board on that. Amy or Anthony, do you have things you're interested in?
Well, I think for the noise, too, I think we need like a peer review or even a third party, because we're hearing notice here, like you said, but we didn't get any packet on who did the sound study and where the noise came from. Like everyone's been told, trust and verify. And then, um, also, when you go down to, go back to the page, when they talked about noise on that page, was it seven forty-seven? There's also talking about-
Yeah, page, page forty-seven, I need to perform some standards.
Under B, there's also radiation, radioactive materials should not exceed limits. And I just think we do need a peer review because this type of plan is just started to develop in the United States. And who and I were reading, trying to do research, it's very specific on how thick the wall's gonna be, and I know twelve feet sounds thick, but we're not experts, we don't know that that's actually gonna contain the radiation. And I, which is like a third party who can either say, yeah, what they're saying is true, twelve feet is gonna keep the residents and keep the employees safe. I just feel like this is way out of our expertise, and all of this is due to our due diligence. We need a peer review to tell us that it's safe. Like back in the nineteen nineties, when STERIS first came to Northborough, they did a peer review of study, and yours came, and, um, the planning board and the ZBA did get that peer review, so they could go for it and say, okay, this third party expert told me this is safe, this is safer. You know, because they didn't have the expertise back then, we don't have it now.
Is there anything else that you would want clarification or?
Um, I'll be back in a little bit. No noise, um, safety with the radiation. We, I wanted a traffic impact study, between the last, I think, gave us a traffic impact study, and an environmental, and an environmental study, too. I also wanted it to talk about the power, because they, something that I was reading talked about with the tight levels of power, there can be like flash explosions. I'm not an expert, so I don't know. I'm not an expert, so I don't know. I guess it can hold all that electricity, so it has to be safely designed, so it doesn't, I don't know, I'm not an expert, but there was things talking about the amount of power that's required, and it has to be designed safely. And this might be, but I would just like to make sure.
Anthony, do you have additional?
So I think that my primary concerns are these two. One is for the abutters to this operation. They, you know, a lot of folks have lived in that neighborhood a long time, it's been fairly quiet up until recently, with some other issues. I don't, I really like us to best understand the impact this may or may not have. Confirming that there's no, there's not going to be increased noise level, other impacts to their quality of life. So that's important to me. And the other thing is, we're, this is going to be something that's in our town for the next tens of years, whatever that may be. I'd like to understand how that impact, is there a decommissioning issue that we're going to have to be concerned with 30 years from now, whether, you know, this, these are huge walls, and, I mean, all this concrete, I don't understand, we get stuck with having decompos, or decommissioning these facilities. So, I, I think those are the type of things that concern me, that I'd like to understand from a peer review.
Okay. I have one more question for Bob.
Sure.
Bob, when you were saying, like, hours of operation for construction, so when you do a noise study, right, the noise, you look at the ambient noise, that's, you know, that doesn't take into construction, right? That's it. So, if, so for example, if there's more noise during construction, that's just is because the way it is.
It is what it is. I get many noise complaints from house, you know, somebody's building a house, and they say, well, there's a lot of noise going on. My general response is that, well, we are also being built, we didn't have any noise to block. When you're doing construction, you're going to have some noise, okay? The bylaws prevent me from doing anything about it. Okay, it's pretty clear.
Yeah.
Okay, so you limit to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, no holidays, no Sundays, okay? And if you want to go beyond that, I've been here almost two and a half years. I've allowed construction to go over on a Sunday once, and it was deep up in the industrial district, and the nearest house was 600 yards away.
Yeah.
Okay? But they were doing something very specific, and they were really applying the controls. So in terms of the noise during construction, I really don't have much to say about it, okay? Because I have no enforcement on that, okay? It's when it comes to the day-to-day operations, okay, unless it's installed, and things are running, that's when I can go over, maybe, establish baseline, and then establish, you know, what, the 5% of the fight money increase to 5%. Have you done that with 31 miles for?
Yeah.
With the trucking? Again, when the, when the facility is in operation, with the noise study, it, it excludes residential units as well. Okay, so it's, you know, I can't take tracking into, into consideration, you know, most facilities are not, can't take tracking into consideration for a construction, and just general machinery at the concrete plant, whatever. I, I have no enforcement.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, the things that I, oh, I'm sorry, I really, I...
I have a question, if it might be possible, I'm not sure who is able to tell me that. The states where the current facilities are being built, if they can tell me the towns?
California and Illinois.
But do you have any town names that we might be able to?
Ontario, California, and Liberty, Illinois.
And what, Illinois?
Liberty, Illinois.
Liberty, Illinois. Thank you.
Okay.
I have another question about the site plan, but if we're going to continue it, should I go back to that or ask it now?
I'd be curious to hear your question, then.
Um, well, my question was, on the left side of the building, I know the ZBA variance now is about 23 feet there. And we do have site design standards, like all four buffers. And, you know, with 100-foot buffer, yours was at 50 feet of landscaping. So I was wondering, to the left of this building, is that all going to be buffer landscaping, trees, and to try to buffer the sites, the sound? Because I think if our water being, you had said you might be driving back there to infiltrate the system.
Well, for pure driving.
Right, but if that's all trees, there'll be no way to get back there.
There'll be a distance between, you going past trees so close to the building, and a distance that would allow people to get back there, to the extent that we can mitigate that area, we will.
Yeah, because, yeah, it's supposed to be just 50 feet of landscaping, it's not popping.
Will give us a provision?
That would be way better.
No, I, I think it was operating, like, if it was required, I thought, defined, we, we did look at that issue.
Yeah.
Because we would have applied for the leak, if we thought we needed it, or we saw that 50 foot, that there was a provision that followed that, that was all that was within our...
So here are, it's like page 780, correct? Mistake of requirements. And number two, is it any industrial use abutting in residential district? Or a lot of existing residential use, in open space here, at least 50 feet in depth, shall be required to mitigate effects of the used, on the abutting residential district areas. And then I note down below, it says if there's not an amount buffer of landscape, then the site plan approval authority may approve a reduced buffer. For our fence, I was just trying to think of different ideas, if there was a lot of sound, and, like, we need, there should be a sound fence along that.
Yeah, I don't think there'd be sound from that building, because of what they're walls. Sound would have been that, chill.
Right.
It would develop, it's going to roll back there.
Well, it should be pretty thick, I mean, all's a pretty big, and now there's only 23, so I was hoping all 23 feet could be landscape as a buffer, so to protect the neighbors as much as possible. But about right now, we're talking, that lot is so tight, we're talking about trucks going back on that side now, too, so...
Not trucks, just isn't, it should be a small equipment thing in the next section, that, 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 that leaks, you know? Yeah, that's where, yeah, I mean, actually, there's something like that, so s, from, would require a little space then, to show.
Just want to make sure, it's not on the drawing right now, but one thing I would call for would be a very thick landscape over there.
Okay. Um, I think... Additional areas for me. Anthony, you brought up the, just in general, not needing to understand the safety, just understanding, how do we know the 12-foot walls are safe or containing it? How do we know, for radiation monitoring, I would know if it was going to be inside and outside, and how do we make sure that there's no radiation getting out of the building? What do those checks look like, when do they happen? A copy of the state federal regulations for how that's regulated. Any sort of proof that level of radiation is safe? The shields, what, the, some information about the shield survey done annually, to make sure it's not exceeding regulatory limits. What are the limits? I don't have any information on that. Any noise with the vents, the cooling vents? Are they the only vents, the cooling, they, any sort of outdoor vents, or just those cooling vents right there?
The chillers.
The chillers, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, that's it, okay. Just more about the chiller equipment, what's the noise associated with it? What, is there some sort of analysis of ground vibration? Um, let's see. Or any, fitting into any sort of performance use standards? Any information on carbon dioxide emissions by the large use of electricity? Any information on, will this level of electricity, you know, you say, what is it, 600 kilowatts? I don't know if that's a lot or a little, will it cause brownouts, or will it cause anything in the neighborhood, all the electric, you know? Any sort of electromagnetic interference I'd want to know about? Any sort of decommissioning plans, any sort of backup plans if something happens? If there's an earthquake and the concrete cracks, what is the plan to make sure that doesn't leak out into the neighborhood? Just the maintenance of walls, what does that look like? How do the inspections work? When are they submitted? Who's responsible for them? Where are they filed, with who? Any sort of... You know, things that we should, what I'd want to know from an expert in reviewing this plan is, what should we be thinking of for conditions? If we don't understand the technology, we don't understand what's happening with this entire process, where it's difficult for us to place conditions. I would want to be advised on what, what makes, for this type of operation, what do we need to do to make sure this is 100% safe for that neighborhood there? Any sort of, Amy mentioned traffic analysis. Concrete plant, so things that are missing, we have missing the conservation, we're missing conservation. Any sort of information from confirmation, conservation. We're missing, I actually still have to read more carefully the groundwater evidence. Let's see. I guess earthworks we're missing, but that's typical. Although I would be interested to see what earthworks has to say as it relates to what's going on here with the concrete plant. I would want to hear from town council on a few things, specifically, what can we do and can we not do? What was the implication of the ver, the appeal? That's the question for over here, not, you guys won't hear that.
I, I can answer that, Carrie, because I, I thought I answered that.
Oh, yes, I didn't see what you did.
Um, but I, because I asked town council that myself in preparation for this evening. And when, when, when an appeal is final, whether it's against, it doesn't matter against what board, but, the way he explained it is that the variance has been granted, and that's what the town has to operate on.
Mm-hmm.
So all the other boards have to go forward with their procedures. You can't stop, and you can't put a hold anymore, you can't just put a hold on the process. So if the, so the variance was appealed, and the appeal process, you know, follows its own, you know, its, its own path, which has nothing to do with the town. And so if the, I mean, one of two things basically happens with an appeal, either, you know, goes to the plaintiff or the defendant. So in this case, if the appeal was denied, then the, you know, whatever decision you make stands in the ZBA decision. If the appeal, you know, you go forward and you, you wish the site plan approval, and then in the meantime, if the appeal, or even at a later date, you know, with the appeal, is decided that it's against the, the applicant, then the applicant would have to then decide whether they want to come back with a, with a new site plan and go through another process. So if the, if the court, you know, upholds the appeal, then, you know, the building department can't issue, excuse me, a building permit, you know, the conservation commission can't, you know, the developer or an applicant can't enact the order of conditions, because the, basically, you know, the appeal has been, you know, upheld.
But if the appeal takes a year, we, we now have a...
The bill, or the applicant can't do anything until that appeal is, you know, I mean, if you, if you approve this tonight, you know, just...
Oh, okay, that, thank you for clarifying that, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, if you approve this tonight, the, that the applicant can't go forward until that appeal is settled.
Okay, my concern was that you'd build this giant concrete maze, and then the appeal, something happens, and then what do we do with a concrete maze?
No, because Bob can't issue a building permit until that appeal is solved.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I think that was all from my list. How do we verify with local utilities that this isn't a problem, it's not going to cause like blackouts and neighboring?
Well, one of the, the, if I can, can I, I just want to clarify something.
Please.
I know you haven't concluded this tonight, but, so what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out to review, to get the board the best information, is, it, it sounds to me like there's a combination here of, there's, there's questions that you have, because you don't have the information
Mm-hmm.
to, to, you know, to answer those questions. So, are, are some of those questions, you're asking the applicant, you know, to come back with that information, and then, based on that information, you would then do, you know, a peer review? Or are you asking just for a peer review tonight, maybe to say? Again, I'm trying to frame this, because I have to write, you know, and figure out what kind of consulting firm, consultant that we're going to, to, you know, I have to get at least three quotes, you know, for the, for the community, you know, to meet the procurement act. So, or are you looking for peer reviews, say, you know, in accordance with our performance standards that are in our bylaw? How does this applicant, application meet these performance standards?
So I am looking for both. I don't, and I'll open up to the board to discuss, but I feel like I would like a consultant to review this application in entirety, because I don't know what I don't know. So how would I, like, know what information to ask for? It'd seem silly to send the applicant, not silly, I don't mean that way, to send the applicant to track down a whole bunch of information, and then come up with a whole new list if we have a peer review, and then have a whole additional slew of information, that, it never occurred to me, because I'm just not an expert in this field. So I guess, what I think the easiest way is to have that review, so that we understand what questions we should be asking, and what information we should be then requesting. And then, you know, just to help guide that a little bit, so that we're not going back and forth, wasting everybody's time with, you know, multiple rounds of... I don't know if that, the board's welcome to comment, I don't know if that makes sense, or...
Some of what we did the cell tower, we had an expert who gave information.
And they did that first?
Each, and sat on the main.
See, that, that was, that, that was, the cell towers, which is very common in communities, you know, it wasn't, you need to North Row, to do a peer review, it's, because what you, like, part of with the cell towers is, you know, you're asking them to prove, the applicant to prove that, you know, there's no place else that they can put this cell tower, they can't go, co-locate someplace else, and so you're, you're asking the peer reviewer, is that all true? You know, they're, they're going to be a wireless expert. So is, are these statements that the applicant is making, are, are they true, are they accurate? But in this particular case, where, and very specific with, because it's such a specific, and it's a special permit also, as far as the wireless communication facility. So, so what I'm, so what I'm hearing, you're saying, Carrie, is that basically a peer review of the existing application? Not asking the applicant, the applicant for additional information to, to come back to the board, but to, to look, to have the peer review of looking at the existing application.
And then we'll know what we need for additional information from there. So timeline wise, about how long would a peer review take, in your experience?
Well, that's, that's a good question, when you're, when you're, again, with wireless, you know, there's two in Massachusetts, it's an easy process, as far as consultants. I'm not really sure who we, you know, I'm going to have to do some research, I'll probably have to just talk to town council in the next few days.
Okay.
As far as, for, you know, for their advice. Because it may, I, I, because I don't know, I, I honestly don't know, I can't answer to you what, you know, it's not, you know, you're not look, just looking, you don't just have questions about radiation, so it's not, you know, radiation expert. You don't just have questions about noise, so it's not an acoustic specialist. You know, where, whereas before, when we had, you know, in, in other towns we've done peer review, it's been, it's been a specific area, you know, so this is more, this is more general questions, but it's all related to an extra facility?
So could we vote to continue the hearing?
That, I, I would say that alone, based on the recommendation that this needs to go back to groundwater, you know, that you would, you would want to continue the hearing. And then obviously, give something back that you want peer review, you know, we have to allow adequate time, you know, for that. I mean, it, it's, it's not, this is not a, you know, a request or proposal that has to go out and be published, and, you know, take, you know, four weeks to, you know, get responses. I mean, this would probably be a matter of, you know, a couple of weeks that we could, you know, have people respond. You know, I would put together just a memo. You know, I would put together just a memo. Yeah, a lot of consultants.
So should we plan to continue that, what is the board thing in terms of planning?
Well, I just have a question about the peer review because I know, I looked at the one quickly that happened in the nineties and they were experts. They did come back and say the ethylene oxide and this is how you have to design the building. So it collapses and it blows up. Like, will we get those answers back that, yes, the shield of twelve feet is proper, you know, it's appropriate and it is safe? Will that be part of the review too? Or?
Well, I would hope it's part of reviewing the application to make sure.
Okay.
So if this is.
I mean, I have your, I have your questions, but again, it's, they're, they're, they're attending areas. So I don't, I wa, I'm not familiar with what went on with isometrics back then and who the peer review was and, you know.
Like, if they may be still.
Yes, they, they don't exist, but the, but I don't, I don't know if they, you know, if it was specific to just all well the nuclear pencil or that needs to be called and all that stuff is still.
We don't, we don't object to peer review, but just for clarity, I, I was jotting down that with all listening. Peer review of noise and ground vibration. Peer review of radiation levels, top of the walls, are they sufficient and radiation checks? And then something about decommissioning. And so like, that's not even in our application because there's no requirement to present anything about decommissioning. So I'm not a peer reviewer, we don't have anything. But I agree with the town clerk that there's some issues you raised that we could provide supplemental information. And there's other aspects you could get peer reviewed, but we don't have it in our application, so not going to peer review.
That's a good point, okay. So are there things from that list that?
It'll take a long time for peer review, you know, focus on.
Are there certain things that you think you could go back with? I was just trying to save time because I didn't want you to have to run back and forth with the, we give you this list, but then peer reviews use another list. So is that actually better to, to look at some of the things that we're looking for and take, and answer those? Like any sort of specifics or?
You asked, if I had, you asked about emissions that we couldn't answer that tonight. And about what is admitted to the practice. There's no efficient, uh, emissions on, on the operations.
So I thought there was a question about some point. Oh, it's carbon dioxide emissions by the large use of electricity. So it sounded like it was pretty intense use of electricity, so I would just want to know more about that.
No problem, I ask. Not that I'm worried.
Okay, so I would just want, you say that, but I want proof. Like, I want numbers like that I can throw and read. Basically, whatever you're saying, not you personally, I just want to see proof that we can look at and review and have someone else look at and verify. So, Fred?
I think it's.
Please.
The groundwater committee needs to meet again. They're not scheduled to meet until November 4th. Your next meeting is there just for November 4th.
Fifth. Yep.
Perhaps that could work on the list of the items that was presented tonight from the, the plan board members and prepare something that we could then talk about and share with you and the applicant at the next plan board meeting and then decide what needs to be quantified by a peer review, what needs to be done. And then you're still going to have to continue beyond that date again because of the groundwater action. And it really wouldn't cost you more time, perhaps that might be where to.
Well, that's a good suggestion.
Does that make sense? Does that make sense? Would you be able to, if we continued, would you agree to continue to, we have two choices in November? The fifth and the nineteenth? Wait, you don't meet till the?
The groundwater committee definitely need till November 12th after.
Oh, so the nineteenth would be the option.
The fourth would be allow us to come back to you, the, I'm sorry, would be allow us to come back to you with discussion on the peer review, knowing that you're still going to have to come back again.
Programming.
Plus the groundwater committee needs to provide the applicant with the information about the guy, uh, extra chemicals and containment. We're supposed to try to review the groundwater.
And when you retire on the fifth, the applicant should be here.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Same, it would be continuing on the fifth and the nineteenth.
But, and then can I just clarify, I'm sorry.
Please do, yes.
Just clarifying the, because then we started to talk. So did I, did you, are you going to ask the applicant to come back with some information that you asked for tonight?
If, if we meet on the fifth, I wouldn't, do you anticipate you would have any additional data or supporting evidence by the fifth or?
If the list of questions and additional information requests is available, we can write anything that we, that we would be able to have by the time.
So I think what we were talking about is that staff is going to take the stuff that we talked about, compile a list, right? And then we'd say, yes, that seems, some might be repetitive, some might not. Come up with a more constructive list and we would then, we all agree with it on the fifth. And then you're going to meet with groundwater afterwards and then the 12th. And then the nineteenth would come back and hopefully by then you'd have some of that material.
So there's no sense in doing anything before the fifth?
Right.
Yeah, there's no sense in that. We'll have a better sense after we get to.
Just, we would figure down exactly what's necessary for a peer review.
Right, exactly. Yep, does that make sense, Kathy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Does that sound, would you want to come or do, if you would just want to come the nineteenth, you'd do that too? But the options are the fifth and the nineteenth.
If they do, they will pose any questions.
Okay.
But again, I also think that if the, and based on the, the conversations tonight, if, if the applicant does have information that they can provide us on any of these issues that were raised tonight.
Perfect.
To, to get that to us.
That's great.
And you can't remember everything that we said, we're on YouTube.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm confused. So, because I thought staff was going to get us the list from this meeting and then we were going to start looking down the issues to be responded.
Staff was my.
Yeah, I, I wiped out because I.
Okay.
I mean, I thought I could watch the video, I guess, to get everything that was really, but.
I, I mean, it's only two weeks, so it's really a matter of us.
Okay.
So involving the list, reproducing it back for all of you to confirm and the applicant can weigh in on what he can and cannot answer and we can talk about what of that list needs to go over here.
Okay.
And Fred, you're talking about that the applicant wouldn't see that list until November 5th? Is that what you mean or no?
I don't think it, I mean, I.
I don't think it matters.
In order to make the list, the whole process as effective as possible, if the applicant's available and wants to review with staff, so we're making sure that both sides are getting back to you what we're asking for. If that's the best way to go, I don't think that we should work in the back of the end of that thing. Only think that the meeting, we're only going to talk about what was discussed. Unless the board has brought that, I'm suggesting for me, the applicant.
Any comments on that? Does that sound, sounds good.
Sounds good.
So we're to continue the November 5th meeting with questions? Would we agree on those questions?
We're, we're going to provide you those questions based on what, on what we've heard.
Oh, okay.
On what we think your questions are.
Okay, okay.
What we're going to, what we're going to do with that list of the questions is try to consolidate what actually needs to be reviewed and by which type of consultant has this.
Okay, so we'll have that list before November 5th.
We will, we're going to, we're going to produce one, we're going to work with the applicant, we should all have the same page. And we'll talk about you on the 5th and care of that.
Okay, so we need to vote to continue to November 5th and that's agreeable to you as well? Will you agree to continue to November 5th?
Can you just continue on that page? Oh, just continue meeting, yeah. Because that would be a tiny time.
Yeah.
I want a motion to continue the public hearing for four twenty-five, Witty Street. Special permit, site plan approval and special permit for groundwater protection of the Lake District until November 5th.
It's, you need to, it's that video.
It's that video.
Is there a second?
My second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, just quickly then, I, I don't think, in light of the time, I think, why, what I'd like to do is at least approve the minutes and any other important business that we have. I don't think there's anything.
I just, I just have like, any, or just a, 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 a company that master plan.
Yep.
I mean, it was already. Oh, okay. So the, so the minutes, the seven minutes that you have in front of you, you don't have Amy's. I, I mean, George, you've already carried, but it probably not given the status that I printed. Um, as far as the whole, so, Carrie, she's got a couple changes, which also been made, Carrie. But Amy, I don't know if you want to go to more, maybe that's.
Yeah, I don't remember, but it's just two words.
Okay, I, I, I got it.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I just want to go over it.
That's fine.
So on page two, Amy wanted to, um, she, she found a type paper. So it's the next to the last paragraph where it says, press be playing. This is town car, he hasn't had his raised facility. And then wanted to add his, correct, where it's cited, cited in commercial area. And then Amy, he said, in on groundwater, I mean, in, in the groundwater area.
Yeah.
So that's, that was on page two. And then on page five, there's, it was just, it is incorrect reference that I'm just going to take out chapter sixty-one. It's in the second, the full, actually, the first whole paragraph. It starts with the whole master plan update review, faults and recommendations. It's about halfway down. She noted the rest was more big picture with discussions about chapter sixty-one A. And in parentheses, it says affordable housing. And, and so chapter sixty-one A isn't affordable housing, so. So I, I, what, what I thought is we're, we're just going to take out chapter sixty-one A and just say with discussions about affordable housing and guidelines for the current development. And then the other change was on page eleven. Second complete paragraph of that last sentence is, press, he expressed concerns that adding, if this is true, then then he can fit under home occupation. Those were any of those three.
I just had a point small on, on page seven. Uh, in the subcommittee update on open space, it says four, this, the second line, it says, four of which have recently gone under contract, but should say one.
I'm sorry, I can't think what. I, I just frittered off listening, not listening to you, but.
Sorry. Page seven.
Yeah, I got that.
Open space committee.
Yeah.
Second line, it says four of which, it should say one of which.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
Any other amendments? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended with Amy's amendments? My, and my amendment was, I'm just bolding issues. Uh, my amendment and Anthony's amendment? So, second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Okay, and we don't have the minutes from ten one?
Correct.
Okay, and you said you had something for master plan?
Yeah, just the, I mean, to reiterate, you know, I sent out an email to everybody. We did a conference call as, as we like to do every other week with the consultants. And Fred and Brett, the chair and vice chair, determined that I have to talk to many consultants, that we need to push it off about a month. We don't have baseline analysis yet, Amy, but I haven't seen that. It, it's really only going to be a couple of days, but I still.
Oh, the bill that you made?
Yeah, the bill, I'm sorry, the bill.
Yep.
So, so that's one of the things that we still need to review. And then there's still just a couple of weeks. We want to go back to the master plan committee. We want to give you a copy of the, you know, master plan and then we'll, we'll hold the.
The executive summary we haven't seen yet.
Yeah, yeah, so, so we want to, it just, you know, we didn't want, I mean, we, we, obviously, we put all those dates together and then we just came right down to it. We're, we feel like we're rushing it just at the very end and we don't want to do that. So it's fairly final, it'll be like about thirty days to land. But we don't have a date yet, we'll look back to the date. We have another conference call next week to, just to tie the, everything. So therefore, your public hearing, you know, that, there's no need to hold a public hearing on the twenty-fourth because that's hard. So that would just get re-advertized. Hopefully, I didn't see, I, I wasn't in the center of town long enough and it, in any point today, it seemed that it came off. The Lions Pope sign. I asked them to take it off, it was up yesterday. But I, I didn't notice it today, but if we took off the website, it should have come off the master plan website tonight. So we sent out a thing to the town leaders, so I mean, everything.
I, yeah, I got it.
And then, then the only other thing I had was, we have an A and O for tonight with, for our next school. So that's, that's all I have.
So can I just say, just a quick question for staff while I have all through view here? And this just because Anthony brings this up in a lot of his discussion we were talking about when I was reading on this minutes about solar and maybe we can include this in our discussions as we go to write the solar bio, where he talks about down the line, you're just looking in the future, ten, twenty years down the line, you have to decommission, maybe your solar farm or something's not working out. Or maybe you have a unique building similar to what we just heard where somehow the town takes over that cross of land and they have to decommission it. How do you protect the town for not having to do such a, like a, how, how does that take place? Where the town has to now incur significant cost for decommissioning something? Is there something that we should look down the line for that or?
I'll tell you this real quickly about solar. It's, it's not a, it, it's not going to be satisfactory answer, but a lot of towns and a lot of the planners, maybe these guys too, but discuss about the whole decommissioning. And so the, the people are calling out like for the solar fields, you know, they have something in the bylaw and the decisions about decommissioning. But of course, the solar industry is saying, why are you, you know, selecting us? Why are you calling us out? Why aren't you just decommissioning, you know, putting in a requirement about decommissioning an office building? You know, that goes vacant for so long.
Or a cell tower or something.
Yeah, or a cell tower, or, you know, I mean, they, they disagree. They're like, you know, in a supermarket, you know, what if the supermarket chain was out of business? And, you know, the building is vacant. And so there's some truth to that, but, you know, we, we probably need, you know, legal counsel on that as far as what I've researched for solar. I don't know what these guys are making different, but.
Yeah, I just think it's, I think it's a good topic that you brought up, Anthony, and I think down the line.
It's a question, it's a question.
Something's not working, how do you?
I'm not sure how decommissioning becomes the responsibility of the town for, for a situation like this, it's private property. The gentleman indicated that the radiation is turned on and off by a switch. Once the power's off, there's really no threat. So unless the town somehow buys a power source, if it really have any responsibility, if you want to decommission, so, you know, twelve foot thick walls, you've got to pay some, you know, for like the twelve hour.
You know, we even get questions, we even get questions about signs, you know, when, when.
That's a good point.
You know, when business goes out of business and the sign still says where they're located there. You know, that, that bugs a lot of people. And, you know, but there's no mechanism, you know, what's the town going to go in? Is there the cost to take down the sign? You know, when, when it's really the, you know, the landlord's responsibility, so. But I understand what you're, you know.
Yes.
It's come out.
Well, obviously, it's coming up through solar because people are concerned, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
I think with cell towers too, there was some.
I think cell towers might be more appropriate because of the height and there's a danger that they could collapse if not maintained or respect the property as much as well. But we're really, one story involved, it's all connected, it's really a much, much, it could fall down.
I didn't know if it was something like, you know, how you guys hold bonds, if you could do a bond for it and then, but then, how would you ever maintain it?
Right, and it changes hands and.
It's not something we would buy. It's really, we need to take bonds when it's something that could ultimately become a possibility to try out the road or somebody's road, like if they develop a sales facility and they want to purchase a home. We have more, we can ensure. That's a road, and somebody's road, like if they develop a failed fulfillment, and they wanna do something, we have one, we can ensure completion to it. Because ultimately, whenever you're responsible, something like this, the town doesn't have any.
Well, I just wanted to show everyone, or unless you all wanted to gather.
You're signing this?
Yes, yeah, so what, so, so what is, well, it's actually just a flare, but it has to be permanent. So, it, so, um, so what, what, what you have in front of you, is this Hudson Street? So this is the A and R, it's creating four lots, and tonight, the land clearing was, you know, lot one, lot two, and lot three. And then lot four, I, I'm thinking that he's spinning that off and, you know, selling it to someone else, I don't know. Um, but he talked about, you know, single-family houses for these three. So all four lots, you know, meet the zoning and.
Do you need all four signatures?
No, I just need one person's signature, but.
No, I, I, just really, just really, the signature?
No, actually, I have to put Millie, thank you, I have to put Millie's, sorry, Carrie, turn this upside down. I have to put Millie's signature through, Debbie might have already done it, but.
Some of them are broken down, like, we're over a hundred fifteen.
Even though, like, these little things, you know, that there's like a, um, even, like, even though we don't see it, the surveyor sees it, it's like, maybe a little, you know, it's not a straight line.
I always wondered why some of them had the whole thing and some are broken.
Yeah, so that's, that's what that.
So if you know a hundred years from now, you're not gonna know who you are by that signature.
So that's like, see, you're, you know.
You're gonna say, who signed that?
To my eye, or your eye, we don't see that. In the survey equipment, there's gotta be like, just some, like, you know, ten degrees by degrees, gonna, but that's what that is.
On the small grounds, it's hard, you can't, there's so many, no?
Well, yeah, I mean, on stuff like this, you know, they're required to submit a month.
Okay, so we have, that satisfies what you need for the A and R?
Yes, you, you, all, all five at a time?
Yep, good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm, you didn't have to, nope. Unless, um, the board objects, I'm going to, not, there's nothing really that we need to cover tonight that we can't cover next.
Right.
Um, meeting, whether it's the subcommittee updates, annual town meeting, town, town planner update, did you wanna take any time? Okay, um, just in terms of the next planning board meeting, so we know the twenty-fourth is canceled, we have the fifth and the nineteenth. One question that I have is, um, in light of what we are asking of an applicant and as part of this process, do we need any sort of information from town council or guidance or any sort of information on, you know, making sure we're walking within our boundaries or anything like that, that we would wanna, in, in advance of the fifth, or maybe after the fifth makes sense? I don't know. Do we need any information? Anything down here? Okay, anything over here?
I don't.
No.
Okay, okay. Okay, then we have, our next meetings are November fifth and nineteenth. We have the next ZB, uh, not we, the next Z B A meeting is on October twenty-second, and I think that's it. If anyone wants to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn, sorry.
Okay.
Sounds about that one.
Great, thank you, it's a long one.